Sorry, distracted.
Just getting organized. I'll call the order. The September 18th, 2023 meeting of the Ellsworth City Council. All councils are present. Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And three rules of order. We follow Robert's rules of order and all the other rules that are adopted from the organizational meeting or other rules adopted during council meetings. Counselor, would you have a?
I do, I'm sorry. I would like to request for item 20 be moved to item 13. Has to do with the reserves for the school.
Question to move item 20 to item 13 and then reorder everything.
Second.
Seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Make that.
It's a school night after all.
It is a school night, that's right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item four, adoption of minutes from the following meetings to the Ellsworth City Councilor. Eight twenty-one, twenty-three, regular meeting minutes.
Move to adopt. Second.
You have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? I'm being tested in my ability to multitask. Item five, city manager's report. Manager Moser.
Good evening, councilors. I have a few things to report on tonight. First off, the city would like to thank Healthy Acadia and the Inspire Center for opening their doors during the storm over this past weekend to help out some of our unhoused population from getting out of the elements. Very much appreciated. Real estate property tax bills have been mailed out, however, many have been returned as undeliberable. The tax office is searching for new mailing addresses and forwarding bills when possible. However, if you have not received a bill, please call the tax office at (207) 669-6620 and verify the correct address. The code enforcement office has issued the final certificate of occupancy for the Jackson Lab Laboratory on Kingsland Crossing Road and Northern Light Pharmacy located at the old Chamber of Commerce building on High Street, or location of the building now. Nomination papers are due to the city clerk's office this Friday, September 22nd, by 5:00 PM. Papers returned will be validated, and those with at least 50 Ellsworth voters will be accepted for the ballot. Dog licenses for 2024 are available beginning October 16th. Absentee ballots, ballot applications are being accepted, and ballots will be mailed when possible. City Hall and the Ellsworth Public Library will be closed October 9th in observation of Indigenous Peoples' Day. And finally, the Ellsworth Police Department will be hosting an open house at the new police station at the end of September. Stay tuned for, on the city website and social media sites for specific times and dates for the open house. That is all I have.
Any questions? Committee, item six, committee reports. Any council attendants, any meetings?
The HR committee met at the end of August to discuss the steps moving forward with the city manager search. Carrie Taylor, the HR manager, and Mara Condon, the communications specialist, drafted a job advertisement that's been approved by the committee, and it was posted to the city's website, MMA, and Indeed. As of today, we received six resumes. The HR committee is going to be meeting on October 3rd at 6:00 PM to review the resumes and determine the next steps. We'll bring more information to the next council meeting.
There've been a number of comprehensive plan subcommittee meetings that've been really well attended and exciting. Really good ideas have been collected. Still looking for input. Visit the city's website for more information and give some of your input to the comp plan.
Any other committees? We have three appointments to make. I'll just read the names, the position, and then we can just take one motion and do it that way. So, reappointment of Jared Wilber to the MBI and Ellsworth Housing Authorities, appointment of Carol Martino to the Historic Preservation Commission, term expiration 2025, and approval of Richard Will to be a consultant to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Move to approve all.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion?
I just have a question. These are all non-paid positions?
Yes. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item seven, citizens' comments. This is part of the agenda where citizens can step to the podium, say your name, and talk about anything that you wish. You have about three minutes to do so. If it's on the agenda, we will allow you time during the agenda item to comment at that time.
Good evening, councilors. I'm John Linehan, 157 Shore Road in Ellsworth. I'm here tonight to talk about taxes. Before, I want to make a disclaimer. I'm very passionate about what's happened to my tax bill, and I assume it's happening to other taxpayers here in the city of Ellsworth. So, if I get vocal or get a thing, it's nothing personal to any councilor, but I just want to put that disclaimer out there because I am very concerned about the tax bill. I brought my tax bill with me. I just got it a few weeks ago, and I looked at it, and it went up 17.875321%. That's an increase. Can I round it off to 18%? Now, I don't care what the mill rate is, I don't care what the value is, all I care about is the dollars that come out of my wallet when it comes to paying taxes. And I've heard several people, more than several people, have complained to me about taxes in the city of Ellsworth. I have taken out my papers, I'm running for the city council, and I'm running on one major issue, and that's taxes. And I believe our current city council has done a poor job watching our spending. They haven't prioritized spending rate. There's only one way you reduce taxes. You have to reduce spending. You can't keep going up in the spending, expect taxes to go down. So, I'm running on one simple message: reduce taxes. I know how to reduce taxes. And before the next council meeting, I'll have an itemized list of every item that I would propose, because you have to make cuts. If you're going to cut spending, something has to cut. You have to reallocate what you have. So, I'll vote no if elected to the council, vote no on any new spending whatsoever for the city of Ellsworth. Instead, I would vote to take the existing budget and reallocate it, reprioritize it. Very simple to do. I've been extensive business experience, a lot of years, and I know how to do that. And people say, "Well, what are you going to cut? What are you going to do this?" And everybody's got their pet agendas that they want to keep in there. I have no pet agenda, other than I want my taxes to go down. They went up 18% roughly this year, and my cuts will be a minimum of 5% to the total budget, because I need my taxes need to go back 18% plus the 5% increase. So, that's what I'll have. I'll have it in writing for the next meeting, if anybody wants to see it, or if I have time to present it, that's more, I'm more than happy to do that. Thank you very much for your time.
Anyone else? Item eight, presentation of awards. First presentation is Douglas Belkate for achieving Chief Officer III with the Ellsworth Fire Department. He can stand here while I read, explain what that means. So, it's very impressive in terms of what it entails. To meet the objectives, to be qualified to receive the designation of the main Chief Officer III, an officer must accumulate 100 points between seven categories: work experience, education, certifications, professional development, professional contributions, active associates, and community involvement. Deputy Chief Doug Belkate achieved all those required standards to attain his Chief Officer III designation. This dedication to the fire service, Ellsworth Fire Department, and the city brings great value and expertise to our citizens in the federal state. So, thank you very much for the dedication and the time.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, sir.
Sandra, she's not here, so we will make sure Sandra receives that. But let me read it. The city of Ellsworth proudly presents a certificate of service to Sandra Abbott. In recognition of your 15 years of service as the Assistant Library Director for the Ellsworth Public Library, your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth. So, thank you to Sandra. Andrew Weatherby. The city of Ellsworth proudly presents a certificate of service to Andrew Weatherby. In recognition of your 15 years of service for the city of Ellsworth Police Department, your devotion to duty and loyalty to the community have contributed to the improvement of the city of Ellsworth presented this 21st April, August 2023. It's obviously not August. So, I think that's just a comment, that two of those individuals, 15 years with the city is certainly a remarkable amount of time, and they put in a lot of dedication to the city, and we certainly thank them for that. Unfinished business, number nine, charter update and potential action. So, this goes back to our discussion last meeting, where we talked about a few items that needed immediate attention, and then there were items that may need future to be addressed from a more formal process with having a charter permission. Do you have those items handy, or those are in the packet?
They're in the packet. Here, do you want the printer?
So, the ones who are talking about the first and second, both of us, what we would, as a council, approve would be making some small changes to be in line with existing practice in terms of timing for nomination petitions, acceptance of nominations, and the ballot preparation that we have for the city. Those are pretty straightforward, and that's why we could, can address that, to make those changes for the charter. All the other items are more involved and would require a more extensive process. Counselor.
If I remember correctly, this is because of changes in the election laws for the state in order to make you compliant?
Yes, that's correct. The state changed nomination paper deadlines from 80 and 45 days, which is what we have right now, to 160 days. So, that's the change for that. And then the ballot preparation changes to, just as the city clerk shall prepare ballots, and I want to make sure that that also means that I can designate a third party to prepare those ballots on behalf of the city. But in speaking with the city attorney, he's drafted those two amendments. He did not think that we had time to do a public hearing before the November election this year. So, the changes that he's proposed, we would, if you approve these, we would do a public hearing, a formal public hearing, and approve those, and they'd go on the June ballot, and the effective date would be July 1 of 2024, so it would take effect for next year's November election when we have nomination papers. By the time that he got to drafting these changes in a formal document, we did not have time to schedule a public hearing for this evening.
Okay, so there will be no action this evening until we schedule a public?
Right, we would just table it until you all choose to take it up for a public hearing.
Counselor.
Could you just share with everybody in this room and online the spirit of this change?
Yes, so as Manager Moser noted in his remarks, nomination papers for Ellsworth are not due back to me completed until this Friday at 5:00, and most other municipalities in the state of Maine have already had theirs back, and their ballot proofs were already sent off to the ballot company three weeks ago. And we'll be receiving ballots back from the state and local ballots typically the first week of October. I will not have my local ballots until closer to October 20th. So, those requesting absentees right now, all I can do is take their applications, and they likely won't receive their ballot in the mail until October 20th, depending on where their mailing address is. When the state law changed several years ago, we just didn't keep up with the date change that the state made to allow better time for ballot preparation and printing and mailing.
Thank you.
So, the new deadline to ensure that these changes make it for next November's election would be May, next May? So, we can?
So, if we do a public hearing, if we make this change, nomination papers would have, would be due in the first week of September versus the third week of September?
But for these changes?
For these changes, yeah, they'd be effective July 1 of next year.
And when would be, sorry, the public hearing can take place anytime?
Anytime between now and March, to give adequate time to get it on a June ballot.
But if we tabled it, we can bring it back in October, that'll give us time to publish for the public hearing, and we could resolve it in our next meeting. It's just, the timeframe from when, was just too tight to be able to get it for a public hearing at this meeting. So, if we table it till the next meeting, we can schedule the public hearing and get it taken care of in October, and it'll be ready for next election.
Move to table to next meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor of tabling the item? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10, review of edits to the approved mooring control ordinance requested at the August 21st, 2023 meeting.
Yeah, so you have updated draft of the mooring ordinance that was approved last meeting. I made the changes as requested. There is a specification for the time that the ordinance is in effect from ice out to ice in each year. I changed the overnight period from 10:00 PM to 9:00 PM, and then got rid of a commercial purpose and changed it to a definition of a dwelling purpose. And then there was the changes that made it clear that anchoragees are allowed within the mooring control area for no unspecified amount of time other than overnight. And then, yeah, just referenced that non-dwelling purpose, and then a line that, you know, you can use moorings for a commercial purpose, but the commercial purpose should not be renting that mooring specifically.
So, I thought our motion last month was that we approved the ordinance with the changes, and we just made, just approving that? We're not approving the ordinance again, we're just approving that you've made the right changes, correct?
Yeah, just, yeah.
Not, really, there's not even any action necessarily, just confirmation that you've all seen the changes and they are what you expected.
Any comments? Do you have to formally?
No, it's already been passed. It was just a matter for you all to see the changes and make sure that they were what you expected.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Consent agenda, there are no items, so I don't need to read the whole thing? Oh, they are asterisked. Should we take a break? All right, I do have to read the whole thing. Consent agenda, all items with an asterisk are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member saw requests in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 11, council order number 091800, request of the city clerk for approval on the time polling places open for the November 7, 2023 state of Maine election and city of Ellsworth municipal election as 8:00 AM. Item 12, council order number 091801, request to the city clerk for appointment of wardens and ward clerks for the four voting districts within the city of Ellsworth for the November 7, 2023 state of Maine election and city of Ellsworth municipal election.
Move of approval?
Motion, second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. New business, remove an item, so item 13 is now council order number 091808, request of the superintendent of schools and school board to expend all or a portion of reserves already established, including but not limited to special education, student transportation, and minor capital projects.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. I went to the finance committee back at the end of the summer because we realized that when we did council orders for the approval of the school department budget, we created reserve accounts, but we were not given the authority to expend the reserve accounts. So, we are asking for formal approval to expend the reserve accounts if and when needed. Knowing that this spring when we do FY25's budget, we'll make sure that that language is in the motions for this coming year.
Move to approve expenditure of all or a portion of reserves already established, including but not limited to special education, student transportation, and minor capital projects.
Second.
Motion and second. Discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Extentions? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Item 14, public hearing in action on the applications for the following licenses. Provender LLC, BBA, Provender 112 Main Street, renewal of the city class C license, Victorio and Liquor, and renewal of the state restaurant class 1, 2, 3, 4, malt spiritus, and minus liquor license. Is everything in order with all these? So, this is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. If you'd like to speak to that application, you may do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Louise Joy and Thomas Joy, DBA Edward Joy &amp; Sons, 129 North Street, for renewal of a city junkyard automobile graveyard permit. This is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. If you'd like to speak on this item, you may do so. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. James Becker, the second, DBA Jimbo's Junkin', 62 Kylie's Way, for renewal of a city junkyard automobile graveyard permits. This is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody would like to speak? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Item 15, council order number 091802, request of the highway foreman to award a bid for a hot top trailer.
Good evening, council. Adam Wilson, highway foreman. I'm here tonight to request an award of a bid. We sent out RFPs for a replacement hot top trailer, and we did receive three back. The lowest bid is HP Fairfield, and with your blessing, we'd like to execute that. We budgeted $52,000. The bid come in at $45,544.
So, I have a question, Adam. There is an option with HP Fairfield about the dual burner option for additional, I think, $5,300. Is that something that you're going to need, or?
No, and the reason why is, the last one we had in 2011 was a diesel hot top trailer, and we had a lot of trouble with the condensation in the tank, and this is a propane burner one.
And what are we doing with the replacement trailer? Are we selling it, or is it just?
Would love to, if we can, if you know anybody. It's, you know, it's an severe disaster.
Not selling it.
Yes.
It's, in essence, it's like a huge furnace, and it's heated up and cooled off so many times that there really is nothing left. I mean, it's still a good frame, but the hot box itself is well past its life.
So, and you're using, like, scrap?
Right.
Hot top? So, and do you have, like, a bunch of it?
Yeah, we have a huge pileout. The issue with doing that is it does not have as good a product as heating the patch in the wintertime, you know, because we can heat the patch up with this, and it's going to have some longevity to the whole of us.
It sounds like this wasn't a total surprise, needing this new trailer?
No.
But it wasn't also on the capital improvement?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was. Yep.
What did you use this year if the one you have is not working?
Coal patch. It's a far dear, far greater expense to put just coal patch out all the time.
And is this, what time of year, what time of year do you use this?
We can use it this time of year when we're hot topping in aprons and such, because it'll keep the hot top hot all day long. In the wintertime, we can heat hot tops, so I mean, that's going to be the biggest use of it, is in the fall and the winter.
How many years have you done coal patch?
I started in 99, and we were using coal patch then.
Okay, so, help me with that a little bit. If you're using coal patch, when you don't have this product that works?
Right, so, this product is a recliner and a hot patcher at the same time. So, it'll do both products. When we don't have this, it's literally, it's coal patch, is exactly what it sounds like. And the warmer that is, the better it is to the hot top.
So, you're using it raw right now?
Yes.
As opposed to getting the bang for the buck?
Right, right, creating that stickiness.
Right, and this is not a rentable item?
No, I have not ever seen it where we could even lease it.
You use old hot top and remelt it?
Yes.
So, you're reusing, recycling?
For the majority of the time, yes.
So, you're not having to purchase coal patch?
Or as much, right.
Yeah. So, if this one lasts as long as the other one, it's $45,000 for 20 years?
Twelve.
Wait, no, 12 years, sorry, 10 years?
Yep, yep.
$4,500 a year.
Move to approve the request of the highway foreman to award the bid for an asphalt trailer to HP Fairfield for an amount of $45,554 to be paid from the highway department capital account, 9090-900-59004.
Second.
The motion and second. Further discussion?
All of these bids were under your budget?
Yes, sir.
Is this a value purchase or a price purchase?
Both. It's, all the machines are comparable. There's, the higher prices have a little bit more of a BTU on them, but for the overall product, this more than meets what we need.
Thank you.
All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Item 16, council order, this is why you're standing, council order number 091803, request to the harbor master and harbor commission to amend the harbor fee schedule, Chapter 3A. Fee schedule is not subject to a public hearing.
Good evening, council. Adam Wilson, harbor master. We'd like to increase the fees at the harbor at the last harbor commission meeting. They voted unanimously in favor of raising them. The last rate increase was in 2019, and this would not take effect until the season of 2024. It's an increase of 10%, and I think in your packets, I made it so that it was all pretty easy to understand.
Have we done comparison of other harbors similar to us, and are we within range, or?
We're still quite low, but the reason why we're quite low is you have to want to be there, and we're a long ride up the river. You know, the, where, we are incomparable with our moorings, which is why that one did not increase. No, sorry. Yeah, we're comparable with the moorings, and didn't increase that. But the rest of it, we're still pretty cheap. You know, we're there as a surplus.
Move to approve the amended harbor fee schedule as presented.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Do you want to stick around for the next one?
Nope.
Item 17, public hearing in action on council order number 091804, request from the finance director to authorize $8,680,000 of city bonds to finance sewer and storm drainage improvements with pump station upgrades, and $4,900,000 of city bonds to finance wat-, excuse me, water main replacement projects.
Okay, so, the first one is for multiple, they're actually both for multiple projects. I wanted to take advantage of the 8.68, as we discussed in finance committee, the terms are just excellent, 1%. We're not going to get that in the market, and we have some pretty big projects to fund for the next couple of years, so. The one for water is for the Surrey Street project, Oak Street, and then?
Lead and copper.
Lead and copper?
We don't have, like, a, do you have an amortization schedule or anything that says how much this is going to cost us per year?
Not yet.
Annual?
I don't have it yet.
Do you, do you need to have authorization before you can?
Apply.
So you can't get that information without?
I have to apply.
So is this, are you requesting authorization to apply, but not necessarily, well, we would have?
Yeah, I have to have authorization to apply, so.
But the?
And you'll see the terms before we sign off on anything.
So that there would be a second, second vote to actually?
Yeah, it's a, it's a CWS RF loan. We have several of them, so I'm assuming that they're fairly familiar.
The order's authorizing issuance of the bonds, it's not authorizing application?
Yeah. Because with any SRF funding, you have, the interest rate's really low, but you also are paying a little bit more for the administrative fees, so sometimes it works to our benefit if we did go to the, you know, open market.
Right. But not at 1%. We won't get anywhere close to that in the open market.
No, I agree, but I would be interested to see what the admin fees are for. Do you know, Brent, what they're going at right now?
Open market?
No. For the, through the bond bank. Sorry.
Bad move.
Just asked a question.
Brent Bridges, Woodard and Curran. Typically, 1% loan, it's a 1.5%. By the time you add in fees and stuff like that, it ends up being effectively about a 1.5% by the time you add in main bond bank and DEP fees to everything else. So about 1.5%.
Thank you.
Brent, actually, maybe before you sit down, can you just maybe shed some light on some of these projects that these funds will be earmarked to address? Because I know you, you and Woodard and Curran have done a lot of the legwork putting all these projects together, so it might be valuable for the folks to understand what exactly we're talking about, this money being spent for.
Thank you, Ben. Brent Bridges, Woodard and Curran. Talk about the water piece first, so the $5.9 million of the water. So, four different projects. And Surrey Road, which is currently under design right now, 90% done, yes?
You said 5.9?
4.9, 4.9. Excuse me. 4.9. Thank you for that.
You're scaring me. More than normal.
Okay. What's a million? 4.9. So what those are are four different projects, and so the, the city had submitted for funding for the drinking water SRF program for the Surrey Road project, and you were awarded that funding last year. And so we're 90% done that design right now. We've got a couple of issues with easements and a few things working out, but, so that project's under designed to go out to bid. So you received $1.9 million towards that project last year. And that was made up of a principal forgiveness amount, which is basically a grant, it doesn't have to be paid back, and then a loan amount. So that, that was the Surrey Road project. The Oak Street project, so Oak Street project is a more comprehensive project. MDOT is certainly instigating the Oak Street project, of which the city will have their own water, sewer, storm drain components to it. And so the, last year, because of that project, the city also submitted to the drinking water SRF program for the Oak Street project, so they could be anticipating their efforts as far as the MDOT upgrade. And so on the Oak Street project, what typically happened is they would give you some money to design it. There was some extra money last year, and so they gave you basically all the money, they gave you the 1.6 million, they gave you all the money for the Oak Street project last year, in the form of a loan and a grant. And so 1.9, 1.6, and then 2.9, 1.6. And also, the drinking water program, because there was such a significant concern about lead and copper services and the impacts on water quality, they also took those two projects and gave the city a few hundred thousand dollars extra to address lead and copper services while they're doing that project. And so the city submitted for the Oak Street project, which is a few years off now to be done. They submitted for the Surrey Road project, and then they threw in some lead and cops, so 4.9 of the total, of which 1.8 of that total is a principal forgiveness. And so by the time the bill comes to pay, 1.8 of that will be forgiven, and, and effectively like a grant. You ask for the 4.9, they don't make you pay back the 1.8. So it effectively is a $3.1 million loan for the Surrey Road and the Oak Street project. So that's the water project. So the city's already submitted for those two, received funding in the form of a loan and principal forgiveness. The city's obligation is, on the loan piece, they need to submit to the main bond bank so that you can get the long-term financing for those projects. And that's what that 4.9 represents, is the long-term funding for Surrey Road and Oak Questions on the water part?
And so we already have it in writing that of the 4.9, we'll have 1.8 forgiveness and principal forgiveness?
Yes. You got, where you got that on June 27th of this year, was the whole rundown of how everything would be done. So you have it in writing, yes.
Okay. And then, and we also, it's guaranteed it's a 1% loan?
Yes.
And that's not taken into consideration the forgiveness?
No. All the loan amount is just 1%.
Okay.
So no. And then, as, as Tammy had said, it ends up being effectively 1.5% by the time you add in main bond bank fees and things like that.
Is this project all funded within the enterprise accounts?
Yeah.
Yes. So it's all rate?
Yeah.
So it ends up being a rate payer issue, just in terms of the loan itself?
Which I believe was part of the discussion when we raised the rates last time. They had built this into it.
So this was built into that project? The project was built into that?
I do remember.
Surrey Road would have absolutely been. I'm not sure about Oak Street, but could have been. I'm not 100% sure on that, the rate, when they did the rate case study.
It may not be. I think on Oak Street, what happened was, you submitted, and they had some, because of the infrastructure, they had some extra money, so they funded all of Oak Street, even though Oak Street is a couple of years out now, so it's well in advance. They're not going to do anything on Oak Street until '26. But because they had some extra money, the drinking water program thought that they'll fund the entire project for you, not just the design phase, and so that's what they put out there. And so it was a, they didn't know how much money they'd have two years from now. You had a defined project, and so, so I don't know whether or not the Oak Street project is in the rate study or not. Questions on water?
We must have guesstimated that it passed in order to have it in the rate increase. Debt service.
Anything else on the water portion? Wastewater. So wastewater project, so two years ago, the city put an application into the clean water SRF program, so in spring of, of last year. And what that defined was, the city had identified that there were storm drain issues as far as over town, there was a disrepair that needed to be addressed. There was some concern about on the wastewater side, continuing infiltration and infiltr- infiltration and inflow into the, into the sewer system that are creating some issues as far as, you know, too much water in the system, as well as you also have the Water Street project, which is finishing up now, and the High Street pump station project, which are gone going. So the clean water SRF application that went in last year took all those into account, and so the city put in an application and said, all of those things together add up to about $10.8 million. The DEP last year said, we have some available money right now, we have $2.2 million worth of grant money to give you, and so we'll give you grant money, no strings attached. You don't have to borrow any money from us in order to get the 2.2 million. What you, what the city is using that money for is, we started last year the stormwater work, so all the work that's been in town as far as cameras down the pipes and stuff like that, and I can talk more about that. So we started that investigation work on all the storm drain system last year as well. And what the city is using that balance of money is to offset the local costs for the Water Street project and the High Street project. And so, because what you said in your application was stormwater work, sewer system work, pump station work, as long as it stayed within those contexts, that money's, that's good. So that 2.2 of grant you got last year, you're using to kind of offset some of the costs you have for the two pump stations projects that you have, as well as the stormwater work that we did, or we're, we're finishing up right now as far as over town. So what that did is, you submitted 10.8, they gave you 2.2 of a grant, that left you with $8.6 million of available SRF loan money. And so the way that DEP works, I'm sorry, I'm a little long-winded. The way DEP works, you have until September of the year following the award in order to say whether or not you want that money. For instance, this last year, there were $55 million worth of needs and $13 million for the grants, as far as DEP was concerned. So DEP is beginning to run out of money, loan money, not just grant money, loan money, because of the needs. And so what, what the DEP said is, hey, if you don't want this money, we'll give it to other communities, and, and you can apply again in the future. And so that was, because you got it last year, you had to decide by September 30th of this year to be able to, do you want the opportunity for that money? And so I think the city decided, like, well, we, we're doing the stormwater study, we're evaluating things, we certainly have needs within the, within the system to be fixed, as well as, again, continuing issues as far as the two pump station projects you've got, and then sewer improvements that can be done as we, as we investigate and find them. And so the purpose of this is, you're kind of under that deadline to be able to say you wanted the money, and then the main bond bank has an application right now so that they can keep that money available for Ellsworth. And so as opposed to, you have a chance to turn it back, so another community can get it, or you can keep it for Ellsworth, and then as you define the projects that you need to do, because you don't have any really, other than the two pump station projects right now, and the stormwater study you're doing, you don't have any defined projects attached to this money, other than when you do it, then you come and say, well, this is a stormwater project, it costs X amount of dollars, and we'd like to use this money to be able to do it. And so it's really having the money available for the work that will be done as an outcome of, for instance, the stormwater work that we're doing right now.
I just, I would just like to take just a second, and thank you, Brent, for all of that, but I think it's critical that the council and the community understand that without this funding, a lot of the work, major infrastructure work that we have that needs desperate attention in the city of Ellsworth is, is going to either fall solely on the, the backs of the taxpayer, or it's not going to get done. And when he talks about the stormwater drainage, that's been an issue in the city for longer than I've been involved with the city. And we've got drainage systems that, and the study will, will show, we've got drainage, stormwater drainage systems that have collapsed, some that are, that were abandoned years ago, that are no longer, that, that they're no longer operable. We've got serious drainage issues from the river all the way up to in and around the hospital that all need to be addressed. And the thing about these drainage issues is it's not only a matter of the stormwater that's detrimental to people's residences, flooding basements and so forth, but it's also extremely detrimental to our roads. And a lot of the reasons we have such poor road conditions throughout our city is because of drainage issues. And when we look at Oak Street specifically, that project, the DOT is coming through there, and the city's responsible for water, wastewater, and stormwater throughout that project, and it's going to be expensive. And the stormwater from that, you can't just necessarily look at the stormwater on Oak Street and say, okay, we're going to put some new basins in, we're going to put some drainage in and be done. Well, you can't do that, because the storm, the water's coming down the hill from up at the hospital, and it's going to continue, it's got to go somewhere from Oak Street, which means we got to address the down, the downhill portions of the stormwater and the drainage. And so it's going to take extensive work in order to upgrade that whole system to be able to handle the amount of water that, you know, that, that we currently have, and with, you know, the concerns for, you know, increased amounts of water, like we've seen in the last two weeks alone, these issues need to be addressed for the longevity and the, and, and for the better interest of the city. The wastewater, some of the wastewater issues, again, Oak Street will be a major concern. We currently have a large pulver project on Red Bridge Road that some of this funding, because again, it's stormwater related, could be utilized to fund that project. So the funding at this rate, the 1%, the 1.5% is, is not something that we're going to be able to achieve in the market as we start to tackle these projects. So I think it's really critical that we take advantage of this opportunity to get this funding so that we can continue the work that we've really started over the last three or four years of really focusing on tackling some of these major infrastructure needs that the city has, which is, you know, as we grow and as we continue to encourage businesses to move to town, you know, if, if we don't have the infrastructure to support them, then we're just wasting our time. So I think it's, I think it's critical, and this funding is, is a great opportunity for us to continue this work.
Councilor.
So this is similar to a construction loan that you pull it down as you need it, correct?
Yes.
And it's guaranteed at that 1% for as long as we, like, do we have a timetable that we need to borrow the full 8.6?
You'd have a, you have three years, and so if you were to borrow right now, they'd like you to use, and, and by 2026, end of 2026, you can ask for an extension, but right now, to keep, it's revolving loan, and so what they'd like to do is have you use it to pay it back, so others can have that opportunity. So if you were to say yes, you have until 2026 in order to obligate the funds, not spend it, but obligate it towards a project.
So the study that you're currently?
So, the study that you're currently, percentage wise, how close are you to finishing that?
We've completed, Adam might disagree, but we've, Adam would say we've done 90%. I'm going to say we've done 90%. So, we've completed the entire study, so we've sent cameras up all the pipes, and we've checked all catch basins and manholes. So we've, we've completed the condition assessment, so the stormwater study is two parts. Number one is, what's the condition of the pipe, and does it need to be repaired? And the second part is a model that you do, that looks like, when water hits all this system, is it overwhelmed or not? Does the pipe need to be bigger? And so, we're in the process of now doing all the modeling work. So we'll be done by, I'm going to say by Thanksgiving, we'll, all of that work will be done, the assessment work is done, the modeling work is done, we'll have a report that talks about all the critical areas, what's the worst case, what's, where would you start, down by the river, and start building back up? So we'd have a capital plan by November timeframe.
Does that, I know this is jumping way ahead with the project, but in terms, I'm just thinking of that three-year timeline, so the engineering that would be required for those projects that come out of the study, is that realistic, the three years realistic to take what you have, what you find, your recommendations, to identify the project, to then have it engineered in terms of the work that needs to take place, the RFP process, all of that, would we be able to do all of that as a community within a three-year timeframe?
I would say yes, with the caveat that you don't have to have the work done, but you have to have the work obligated. So if you were in, in, in the fall of 2026, if that's when Oak Street was going to come, and you were doing, and you were using this money for the stormwater and, and the sewer on Oak Street, as long as you were able to obligate that money during that period of time, you can, you can spend it after that, but you have to have it obligated within that three-year period. So I would say, yes, you could.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilor Haller?
I have a question for the finance director.
Yes, sir.
So, in a, in a round conversation, $13,580,000 at, let's say 2%, you're saying one and a half, let's call it 2%. What is the payback period of these in a typical form? Is this a 20-year payback?
20 years.
20 years. So what is, have we thought about what the payment is to Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth?
I don't know yet. It's too soon, but I can have that for you.
Okay. But it's, it's typically 20 years?
Yes.
And in round terms, we're borrowing 14 million, committing to borrow 14 million bucks, to get $2 million of free money?
No.
No.
No, we already got the $2 million.
Yeah, we already got that.
Okay.
And there's no, there's no borrowing required to have the $2 million.
Okay.
That's on the 8.6, but we have, we will get 1.9 on the 4.9, right?
1.8.
1. whatever.
1.8 on the 4.9.
1.8 on the 4.9, principal forgiveness, and the 8.6, there's no principal forgiveness on that, it's at 1%? No, yeah.
So, I can't be too far off here, 14 and 2, because we don't have the 2 yet, right?
We do.
We do, we already got the 2.
Right, but you're talking an additional 2, using round numbers.
They got 2 last year.
Right. And you're not getting another 2 in this?
1.8, you mean?
Yeah.
1.8 is the forgiveness.
Right.
Of principle.
On the water side, 1.8.
Right, okay, I'm using round numbers.
Yep, okay. Two, can I say two things?
Please.
I think that typically 20-year terms, I know, we work with several communities that will also model 30-year terms, I know some communities don't like to borrow that long. Pipes in the ground have a longer duration than mechanical equipment, a lot of times when you're doing upgrades, and you're talking about pumps and controls and instrumentation, doesn't last 30 years, it doesn't even last 20 years. But when you're doing pipes in the ground, that typically have a longer life of that, if, if the, if the city would determine that the bond bank will do 30-year terms, so just to say that, not to say, sometimes, communities don't like to obligate themselves that long, but they will do, but they will do 30-year terms.
So, I think a better question would be, if we did not do this, didn't do the drainage, every bit of work that we do to the roads is going to be for nothing, it's going to be demolished in five years instead of 30 years. And if we don't do it, say they pave the road, then the road degrades, and this wastewater system and everything degrades under it, you've got to tear the road back up, go at it again, which is going to be on the taxpayers' wallet completely, because at this point, we're trying to get ahead of the game and get along to get more done.
Yeah, I don't know that I would put it as though we're trying to get ahead of the game, I think we're playing serious catch-up.
Yeah, right, I agree with that too.
We've got serious infrastructure needs that haven't been addressed for a long time.
And if we go picks and roads and not address any infrastructure, we just might as well do nothing, and leave the road and just let it collapse.
Emergency repairs are a lot more costly than scheduled planned repairs, so if you, if you do nothing, and you're going to continue to have a system that's deteriorating, and you're going to have, continue to have roads that are collapsing underneath the, underneath the weight of, of this continued stormwater, and you're going to have potential for water main breaks, and sewer main breaks, and things that, that you're hopefully going to be eliminating by going through and replacing old and aging pipes with new.
If in my last three years, I've learned nothing else, I've learned that if something breaks, you've got to fix it. And if you don't, it's going to cost 10 times as much when you decide it's time to fix it. So...
Is the principal forgiveness, is that prorated based on how much is actually spent, or is it all or none? Do you have to use the 4.9 to get the 1.9?
That is prorated. So if you were, if you didn't use the 4.9, you'd get, it would be prorated, and so rather than the 1.8, you'd get less than that.
You'd get less than that.
Of course, you don't, you don't lose it, it's all proportion.
That's, that was my question. And so, you know, I, I think what we know as a city, I think everybody knows this, is that, that all the work that you just talked about, there's work that has to be done. There is going to be costs, whatever the project is, unfortunately, we have a lot of projects that need to be completed. And what this does is it presents a funding resource that is the best financing that we could possibly get. We're not going to get financing from traditional financing, where you're going to get 1.9 million dollars of, of principal forgiveness, it's not going to happen. So, we, we can not have this available to us, and then spend 4.9 million at whatever the interest rates are. We don't have to expend this if we don't have a project. What we, what we do is that we apply for it, we have it in reserve, and then we look at it, and the council at the time will have conversations and decide whether that project is worthy to draw down these funds or not. If we don't apply, then we will never have this kind of resource available, and this kind of financing available. And for the sake of pretending that we're saving money by not applying for this, is really false thinking, because we're not obligated to spend it. But we do have a lot of projects, and there probably will be, I believe, there are projects that we would say, yeah, let's use this funding. Otherwise, the city will be borrowing at a much higher rate, and this will not be available. So, I, I, I think we have to massage the wording a little bit, in terms of saying that, talking about it from the authorizing to apply, and then we'll have a second, the council will have a second vote to utilize it at a later time, but those are my thoughts. Councilor Haller?
I, I agree with you, I mean, it's, it's an opportunity, and if, and if we're not obligated to borrow it all, if we don't have a project, it's kind of, it's the same idea. The only thing that I would ask is that, and I know that the finance director is working on this, but we really need a good debt service plan, and we need a really good capital improvement plan to prioritize these projects, so that the council can approve the projects as they come down, and that we don't just start doing a whole bunch of projects, and then the council doesn't authorize the drawdown of any of these. I think it's the best way, we get $13 million, it should be done on a priority list, decided by everyone, and a good plan, not a list, but a plan.
Is there a motion?
Does it have to go to a public hearing?
Yes. So this is a, a public hearing, so open the public hearing, public hearing is open. If anybody would like to comment on this, they may do so, just step to the podium, say your name, and have an opportunity to speak. Seeing done, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing's closed.
Do we have the motions?
Yeah, I'll give it a...
I'm an advocate. I would like to speak, I'm sorry.
Go right, go right to the podium.
Yeah, when there was a big storm, someone took me into the recovery center over there. So excuse, but I haven't slept too well. Anyways, I'd like to talk a little bit about marijuana, on marijuana in general.
Okay, that's going to, that's going to be coming up on the agenda?
Oh, I didn't, okay, I didn't.
So that, at that time, you can.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, no problem.
I'll take a stab at it. So, order authorizing the application of $8,680,000 of the city's bonds financed sewer and storm drainage improvements with pump station upgrades, and order authorizing the application of 4.9 million of the city's bonds to finance water main replacement projects.
Second. So a motion, a second, further discussion. All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Item 18, public hearing in action on council order number 091805, request of the fire chief to establish an ordinance for the billing and collection of user fees and beneficiaries for emergency medical services.
Evening council, Scott Gilroy, Fire Chief, City of Ellsworth. Tonight, what I have proposal is EMS billing ordinance, just the history for people listening. Earlier this spring, the council, the direction of the city was for us to pursue an ambulance, and to start offsetting the contracted provider by being able to provide transport service. Last month, you authorized us the ability to go ahead and start transporting. This proposal is to create an ordinance to allow us to create a fee structure for billing. Right now, we can't bill. So with this, this outlines what that would be, it would also outline what the fee schedule would be, and in doing so, we would use a third-party billing service to be able to collect those fees. I believe you all have received a copy of the proposed ordinance. The way that was done is, we, we, we looked at a couple of different, we looked at a bunch of municipalities around us, and we compared what their rates were, and we set our rates at an average in the middle, as opposed to being on the high or the low end, so we averaged it out in the middle. We did send it to the city attorney for review, and received it back. So, what's presented from you is what's been approved by the attorney.
As somebody who is very familiar with billing insurance and Medicare, this is absolutely the right way to go, and, and I think very economical in terms of doing it. If the city tried to take this on, it would be very expensive, and get out of control very quickly. So I think having this kind of percentage-based system makes a lot of sense, it will bring in revenue to the city, and so I, I think that's definitely the right direction.
This is a tiny thing, but there's a typo on the third page, mutual aid primary user fee. At least in the one that goes sent us.
Okay. We can correct that.
Oh, who's to add?
Councilor Haller?
Is there any thought or any way to provide this free to the citizens of Ellsworth?
You want my blunt, honest opinion?
That's what I'm asking.
No. The cost, the cost of services, the cost of medical supplies, the cost of salaries, for the additional people that would need to be able to do it on a full-time basis, we could, we would be asking you for a higher and higher budget every year to cover the cost of medical supplies, so...
And no ambulances free, and Medicare will pay in certain circumstances.
Correct.
And I'm assuming a fee schedule will be established, so that individuals who don't have insurance are not going to be left with a huge bill, but...
Yeah, the fees, what we have there is for a fee, is a fee schedule that has been, and we've tried to keep it very fair. Again, we tried to make sure that we were in the middle, and not at the high end, and again, for what we're providing right now, we're, we're a supplemental service to the city, because we already pay for a contracted service.
Councilor Haller?
No, you go ahead, you had your hand up first.
That's why I ask, if, if this is supplemental, and the city has been forging the cost to send personnel out anyway prior to this purchase, I'm just wondering, if it's supplemental, how much supplies will be used? Is there a way to benefit the citizens of Ellsworth at this price?
So here, so we'll use what, basically, the last two budget cycles. We have increased our budget for the EMS medical supplies 100%. We went from a $5,000 EMS budget to a $10,000 EMS budget, and that's just to cover the cost of supplies that we're using. We don't get any return to be able to do that, and if we continue to do this, the cost of supplies continues to go up. So we're actually costing the city more and more money, and asking for more money each year, in order to pay for those costs.
And so we contract with who, Northern Light?
Correct.
Right now? And if an Ellsworth citizen calls, calls 911, and the ambulance comes, and Northern Light transports you to the hospital, you're still going to get billed for that.
Correct, from Northern Light.
It's not like the city is paying for you to be transported by Northern Light, but won't for us. No matter what ambulance you take to the hospital, you're going to get billed for that.
Correct.
Councilor Haller?
And in fact, the citizen right now is paying, one, is paying taxes to have that third-party service, and then is also paying for their ambulance ride.
Right, so we're paying more to use them than we would be to use ourselves.
Correct.
No, I was just asking you about the designation of the account of funds, I think it would be good to make sure that the council, or at least the finance committee, is getting some sort of quarterly breakdown of how much money is going to be going into that reserve, and then at budget time, I think it's important for us to take a look at that account to help offset those costs for the added expenses.
Absolutely, that's what we've been working with the finance director on, establishing that.
Okay.
Councilor Stine?
And that contract with Northern Light runs out when?
July, June 30th, 2025.
And the plan then is to transition just into the local, also the service, to continue to use that contract?
We have not developed a plan moving forward yet.
And that's one of the things, the future, in terms of when we think about the billing, setting that up.
Right.
It's important to set that up on the front end, and not try to do it after the fact, and if the decision is made at some point for Ellsworth to operate a full ambulance for just the citizens of Ellsworth, the costs, there are, there are other costs, it's not just supplies, because then the hiring, the number of personnel that you will need to operate, that will increase significantly, and will, that there will be a cost there. So, it's important for the city to have the ability to pay for this type of service, that's been part of the discussion all along, understanding that it's a high-cost service, but it's also recognized that it's a much-needed...
So, last month you gave us approval to start transporting on the twenty first of August. We have done, we have done one transport since. They have now been readily available to us. So we have formally done one transport and we've also done one, what we call an ALS intercept, where we put our personnel on their truck because we had the higher level. So we've, we've had two billable opportunities since we started here last council meeting.
This is also a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the public hearing. Public hearing is open. Anybody that wishes to seek on this agenda item can do so.
I'm just wondering, how many of these transports in Northern Light involve drugs or centralized?
I don't have those statistics.
We don't know that.
That wasn't part of the agenda.
I didn't hear.
He was asking what the demographics were for drug-related calls.
Is there a way we can give some figures what it would cost for a person that doesn't have insurance for a transport compared to a person with insurance and what have you? Is there a way of breaking that down so people can hear it, you know, watch it?
I would have to talk with a billing provider to get the background information as to what exactly that cost is, except for what we have for the actual physical fee structure. Because typically Medicare is gonna pay sixty to eighty percent of the total cost and then the client is responsible for the remaining pocket expense. So it's dependent on the level of service that's provided to them, whether it's just an ambulance ride to the hospital or whether there's medications and things involved. So the fee schedule is based on that. So it could be a couple hundred dollars, it could be more than that. It's really hard to make that call. I would have to get with whoever's gonna do our billing, get a very broad breakdown of what that difference would be.
But you could have a stipend for it, so like five thousand dollars to transport somebody and, you know, you need, I'm just curious what the breakdown would be.
This item is to establish ordinances later on in terms of the user fees. That will be, I would imagine, a regular, if not annual, maybe every couple of years, certainly where the council will be reviewing what the fee schedule and making those adjustments. So that will certainly be available in terms of the initial and then the council can set, it's not, no one else sets it. It's the, it would come from the city. So if there's a determination that it's too high, there could be discussions about that.
Yeah, and it's, no matter what ambulance you take, if you're saying you basically looked around at all of the other services, you set this rate at kind of the average middle.
Correct.
It's not any different than any, it's not like we're trying to make money where other ambulances are. It's basically just, you're gonna perform this service some of the time, we might as well get reimbursed for it the way every other ambulance company gets reimbursed.
And typically, we know what the average rate of return is from the insurance companies, whether it's Medicare, Medicaid or private pay, we know what the rate of return is and that's how those fees were, were kind of figured that we're not gonna get, we're not gonna receive what we ask for, we're only gonna receive a percentage.
And it looks like your highest rate is fifteen hundred dollars.
Right, and that's for a very advanced level call.
Very advanced.
Very advanced level call.
My husband had to have an ambulance in Massachusetts and I can tell you, and it was literally across the street, literally across the street, and it was way more than fifteen hundred dollars. So I think, I think your rates are very fair. In fact, insurance companies would probably love you.
I think it's also important to remember that the actual transports are a fairly small percentage of the calls that they're going on. So for every ten calls we go on, there may be an actual transport involved. So there, to Mr. Holland's point, the citizens of the city of Ellsworth are getting a significant amount of service for the few that will actually have to pay for a transport to the hospital. Because when we go out and there's no transport, there's no reimbursement. So that's solely on the citizens of the city to pay for those expenses. And the original idea with this whole ambulance and secondary transport was to, in fact, begin to have a revenue source to start to help offset that cost of not only the transport calls, but also all those other calls that were going on where there is no transport and there is no opportunity to bring in any money to the city, so.
So, any other public comments? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Public hearing is closed. Further discussion?
Move to approve the EMS billing and collections ordinance.
Second.
As written with typo fix.
Any further discussion? Do you wanna challenge that? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Item eighteen, council order number zero nine one eight zero six, request of the fire chief to award a bid for the Safer Grant recruitment and retention marketing program.
So as you recall, back in, back in April, the city of Ellsworth and six other communities were awarded a Safer Grant for one point two million dollars. A portion of that grant was budgeted for recruitment or retention for marketing. Again, as the fire chief, that is a very, very intensive amount of work. So that was, that was budgeted into the original application for the grant. We were budgeted a hundred, in the grant, it was allotted for a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars towards recruitment for the marketing side of things. You guys approved the grant, accepted the grant in May. In July, we went ahead and started the process to put the bid out for the marketing plan and to bring in an outside third-party agency to do the marketing aspect of it. Again, with six other departments involved in this, it's a lot, a lot of work. We put the bid out, we received three bids back. I believe you all have a copy of those bids. The lowest bid was First Arriving, which is a, actually a very experienced organization and most of the members there are fire service individuals. And they came in at the hundred and forty, hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. What that will do, again, that'll come in, they'll come in and they'll do some website building for all six department, all seven departments, along with what they call a clearinghouse, which means if somebody puts in an inquiry that they're interested in the fire department, it will immediately go to that specific department that's, that has the interest. But it'll also come back to the recruitment or retention coordinator that is an employee of the city to help them start with that process also. So, but this is just for the marketing side of this, not for an employee. This is for a marketing company to come in and take care of that process.
And this is, this is all grant money?
This is all grant money. Correct. Correct.
Was there a budget that was provided for the marketing?
Yeah, well, it was broken down into three or four different categories. What it totaled out to was a hundred and forty-five thousand for the total. But after talking with the grant manager for our program, if we're not using money in one line item, we can move to compensate if we need to use it in another line because it's one big number as opposed to a very fixed budget line.
I just feel it's important just to touch on what Counselor Beal had mentioned about this not being tax-bear money. Not only is it not tax-bear money, but the whole premise behind this grant is for recruiting and retention of volunteers. We're not recruiting and retention, retaining paid firefighters. This is volunteer staffing. So, you know, this is, this is an effort, an all-hands-on-deck-for-seven-communities effort to really get that word out there and really try to bolster the volunteer resources that we all need so desperately in the fire service in order to be able to provide the highest level of service for our communities. So, critical that it's recognized is that we're trying to get volunteers, not paid people.
Move to approve the fire chief to award the bid to First Arriving for comprehensive marketing program in the amount of one hundred and forty-six thousand, nine hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second.
Motion, second. Further discussion? All those in favor? All those opposed? Motion passes. Item twenty, council order number zero nine one eight zero seven, request of the fire chief to award a bid for the Safer Grant mobile LED sign trailer.
So this kind of piggybacks off the whole marketing, getting the word out. This is a trailer that can be moved around all seven fire departments. It's a digital, digital display. Eighty percent of the time, it's used for recruiting, letting, getting the word out that we need people, grab people's attention while they're on the road, not distracting them while they're on the road, getting their attention while they're on the road.
Good save.
But it's exact, it's exactly that. It's meant to get the word out. This is, again, a grant-funded project. It's very popular across the country and utilized a lot of places. The last program that I was a part of, I didn't use the trailer. Instead, down south, they still use a lot of billboards, so I was able to use billboards down south. But here, this is our only avenue to get the word out beyond just website and print with the amount of people that travel through the Ellsworth area between all the other communities, getting that word out and saying, hey, you know, we're looking for volunteers in Trenton while they're traveling through Ellsworth going back home, gets that word out to them that they may not necessarily, necessarily go over to Trenton for their pancake breakfast every month. So it gets the word out to them on a regular basis. So that was, again, part of the application process. It was a budgeted line item in it that was approved by FEMA. The other part of that is, and we'll use this weekend as a primer example, it has a, what they call an iPOS integration, which means that we can get emergency notifications out from here remotely to that trailer anywhere if there's an evacuation in process or we're setting up shelter locations, we're able to get that message out to that trailer instantaneously from, from here at the station. And that's one of those things that becomes an asset to us even after four years, is we have that capability moving forward.
So we get to keep it? We keep the trailer?
Yes, yes. So what wasn't noticed, wasn't mentioned as a part of it was, and I'm sure the questions come up, what's the timeline gonna be and do we have to go get it? No, we don't. It's gonna be six to eight week delivery after we approve it and they are delivering it.
So again, it's the grant, it's grant-funded and the recruitment, to the manager's point, recruitment of volunteers is important because as long as I've been on the council, every year there have been a request to hire more personnel and because there's a need for that. Having volunteers allows for an efficient system that doesn't cost the taxpayers as much, but also provides resources when they're needed. When we talk about providing an ambulance service to the residents, we do that because that's a real need. It's value-added for the community, it's something that's needed. This is no different. And the fact that we have grant funding that costs the taxpayers absolutely nothing to try to enhance our resources for those times when that, those individuals are gonna be helping people at the time of the worst scenario for them, whether it's a fire, an accident, weather condition, whatever that might be, we end up having more resources to benefit people. I don't know why we wouldn't unanimously approve that kind of funding. Seems kind of absurd, but that's, I think, I won't say it that way.
Move to approve the fire chief to award the bid for mobile LED sign trailer to signs plus for the amount of fifty-four thousand, three hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Second.
Motion, second. More discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. We will take a break here because I've learned. So we're gonna take a five-minute break because we have a lot of agenda items and a lot of discussion ahead of us, so we'll just take a quick five-minute break and give everybody a minute to stretch. I don't know why we wouldn't unanimously approve that kind of funding. Seems kind of absurd, but, that's, I think, I'll say it that way.
Move to approve the fire chief to award the bid for mobile LED signed trailer to Signs Plus for the amount of $54,385.
Second.
Motion and second, more discussion. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. We will take a break here, because I've learned. So, we're going to take a five minute break because we have a lot of agenda items and a lot of discussion ahead of us, so we'll just take a quick five minute break and give everybody a minute to stretch.[335.69]
Bring the diverse issues of America's Main Street to the governing and policymaking process. Main Street is the historic core of the community, so a healthy Main Street core protects property values and surrounding residential neighborhoods while the commercial district offers convenience to neighboring residents. I know here in Ellsworth oftentimes we talk about being the city center and other surrounding communities coming in and using resources, and this just sort of further sort of puts value, I think, on Ellsworth as being the county seat here in our county. The downtown represents independent businesses that support local families, support local community projects such as teams and schools, and keeping profits here in our town. It helps reduce sprawl by concentrating activity in the downtown area. And the last one is, Heart of Ellsworth is made up currently of four subcommittees, and those four subcommittees are populated not only by board members but also by other folks who are very interested in getting involved in their community to make a difference. And so all of those four committees have anywhere from, I would say probably, five to eight different committee members that then are tapped in to help support, of course, at no cost, to support endeavors in the downtown. I guess I'm going to stop there for a moment and ask if there's any questions. And if not, then I will start to talk about the application process.
Yeah, so this, you're asking for our approval to move forward with the application process because you need our support in order to move forward with the application process?
Well, at the end, I have sort of a formal ask, and the, but we are trying to tonight to keep the council informed of the decision that the Heart of Ellsworth Board has made to move forward with applying. Whether or not we receive the status of becoming a Main Street community will remain to be seen. But the application process will start next month, so in October. So at this point in time, we're working on forming a committee that is to include members of the Heart of Ellsworth Board, city agencies and/or city commissions, business owners and property owners, and the commitment of folks who would serve on this committee is anywhere from, you know, one to two hours per month for 11 months of the application During the application process, we will work to establish an annual funding structure with the City of Ellsworth by working with the Finance Committee. And this will be to determine a funding plan that will work for our community, for support for Heart of Ellsworth, and support for the city in turn with however it is that we decide that we are funded. There is a lot of space for us to make this part of the application process, one that is specific to Ellsworth and suits Ellsworth's needs. We have also been partnered up with Abby Levin, who is our Downtown Center Advisory Council member, and she will help us through the entire application process. Abby came here and she worked with Ann Ball, our program officer at the Main Downtown Center, and Sylvie PK, all three of them presented in January to you folks during a workshop, a council workshop. So in closing, the Heart of Ellsworth Board of Directors and staff invite a member of city staff and/or a council member to be part of the application team that will begin the Main Street application process in October. Our municipality is a critical partner in this effort, and we look forward to working with elected officials and staff throughout the process. So at this time, I'm happy to take any questions about any aspects of what we just covered. We did provide you folks with the full application process as well as sort of kind of a double-sided fact sheet about the Main Street program.
Well, I have a question, but I remember the presentation that they gave us in January, and it just seems like a really good program to be a part of and a way to make a small amount of money go a big way, and I think we all care about the city growing and developing and partnering with nonprofits to help us get the most bang for our buck makes a lot of sense to me.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've seen through the council but also through committees like the Recreation Commission as well, it's not always possible to just throw some budgetary money at a plan or an event or a problem. Most of these things require a dedicated team and volunteers and time, things that the city, you know, can't necessarily focus on, so it's really important. Things like the free concert at the Franklin Street Park is incredible, doesn't, you know, didn't cost the city anything, which is great. Didn't cost people anything who went to the concert either. Thanks for notes like that.
I have a statement, but I have a couple of questions on your checklist. The statement is, I received a lovely letter from one of our business owners on Main Street, who's a new business owner that was very appreciative of Heart of Ellsworth and the work that you did to help them get situated and answered a lot of questions about their opening their business, and you really helped them as a startup. So that's appreciated because that's, you know, exactly what we look for, you know, especially for friendly businesses in Ellsworth, and it's business friendly, so that's appreciated. But on your checklist, I noticed that you need municipal government resolution, which is highly encouraged, it says, and I didn't know what that resolution was. But you also have to give a three-year budget projection. Will you be coming back to us asking for specific support, and will that be like through the next budget cycle? Is that when you're looking to do that?
So to take your first question, I think that a big part of what we're about to embark upon and why we have been assigned a point person, who is an advisory member of the Main Downtown Center's Board of Advisors, Abby Levin, who also works as a cultural tourism officer for the Main Office of Tourism. The reason why we're paired up with these folks is so that they can help us and guide us through the application process, because as you can see there, there's a lot to it. It's definitely an 11-month period worth of work. And I think a lot of these questions will be answered by Abby, and that one in particular, I can certainly get back to you. And then your second question about budget, I think there was a lot of discussion around this budget piece, hence why I sort of tried to outline some of the higher-level grants that we were able to bring in as a result of just being an affiliate. But I think that the Main Downtown Center especially is very sensitive to this. Here in Maine, and speaking about the state in its entirety, you know, we're not perhaps as wealthy of a state, looking through the lens of municipalities, as other states around the nation that are heavily a part of this program. And so there was a lot of talk and even perhaps some flexibility. What I kept hearing was there was the idea of us perhaps working with the Finance Committee to start to figure out, you know, what it would look like for Ellsworth, and perhaps maybe even stretching it out from a three- to five-year plan so that it was sort of a slower build. I have been told in so many words that nothing is steadfast, and if the Ellsworth City Council and the members of the community sort of are looking to start it here, whatever here looks like, then that's where we're starting and that we would not be denied based upon that. They really are, and when I say they, I mean both the Main Downtown Center but also Main Street America, which we will be vetted through Main Street America, not the Main Downtown Center, that they're very encouraging and they want to work with municipalities, and they want to see, of course, they want to see more membership, and they also want to see more communities being a part of their network, so does that?
It does, I just, because as you know, a budget is one year, and the council really can't tie future councils to a budget. So I just was wondering how that was, how that would affect the application. And I know that other municipalities have mangled the same thing, so I'm sure that there's a way to do it, I'm just curious.
And something else that you didn't ask about, but I know, Councilor Beal, you and I have spoken about in the past, is perhaps trying to figure out a couple of different avenues of where the money would come from so that it's not on the back of taxpayers, because there are plenty of opportunities, there's quite a few creative thinkers at both the statewide level and of course at the federal level of this. So it's sort of one of those things where every community does it differently, they do it through the lens of what works for their community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you folks very much.
Item 23, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding An Ordinance to Governor Panhandling Sponsored by Council Alliance.
So I'll just give the short version of, I drive a 60,000-pound truck, and it takes a lot to stop, and it doesn't take much for a Volkswagen to stop at the end of the road by Lee Auto Credit on Myrick Street. I'm driving, you know, the speed limit, of course, in the car in front of me, the light's green, they stop dead in front of me to give somebody money that's standing on the median, and I almost plowed over them. I mean, so close, it's not even funny. I just think it's dangerous for me, it was dangerous for the people in front of me, and it was definitely dangerous for the person standing there gathering up money. So I kind of like to see if there was something that we could do in order to stop that kind of, I ain't gonna call it behavior, I don't know. My basic concern, I mean, it could have been dangerous for three different people. I mean, the people in the car could have gotten killed, the people, the guy standing there could have gotten killed, I mean.
So Jean brought this incident and this information to my attention, and we've had some conversation about it. If you look, if you look across the state and really across the country, communities have taken efforts to put ordinances, rules in place to eliminate or to control panhandling, as we'll reference, because that's in fact what was happening, what was taking place in this particular incident. Some have been successful, others have not. In our state, there is legal precedent that provides panhandling protection under the First Amendment, particularly the City of Portland tried to enact it, or did in fact enact an ordinance that banned panhandling, and they were quickly sued and ultimately lost their lawsuit. The Supreme Court has not ruled on any such case to decide whether the Supreme Court of the land believes or agrees that it's protected speech under the First Amendment. So if the council were interested in entertaining some action under this premise or to address this issue, ultimately, I think it could be done, but the crafting of, the wording and the crafting of the ordinance would have to be very specific. I think you could regulate time and place and the manner of panhandling without completely prohibiting the act. And as long as the ordinance is neutral, is content neutral, and the people, you know, it's not explicitly banning the activity, I think there's a potential for us to be able to put some safeguards in place, potentially to address more, I think the focus would be to address the safety concern more, it would have to be to address the safety concern more than it would be the actual act of the panhandling. So I think if it's something that the council was interested in, there's more conversations that could certainly evolve from this initial, you know, initial conversation, and I think that it's something that, you know, probably would have to be potentially vetted out through some sort of workshop, and obviously some legal opinion to make sure that we don't set ourselves up, you know, for failure but for a legal battle to impact the situation.
So that almost happened to me too, but it wasn't a panhandler, it was three men that were saying they were collecting money for a rehab organization or something like that, and they were running all over the street, and people were stopping at a green light, and I just, I don't, I wouldn't, I mean, if people are in need, I don't have any issues with them panhandling, I get it, but in an area where the DOT wouldn't even allow us to put sidewalks because it was too dangerous for pedestrians, you know, why is it, I mean, it's got to be too dangerous to stand in a median, and especially when there's more than one person doing the same thing. It's just, I mean, if I wasn't, hadn't been paying attention to the person, I was trying to pay attention to the person in front of me and the three guys running around with signs trying to make collections, and it was, you know, it's chaotic. And unsafe.
So, I mean, there is, I mean, we already do have some controls, I mean, there are laws in the, on the books regarding impeding traffic, pedestrians impeding traffic, so, you know, those type of, if the authorities are notified, police could go and make contact with the individuals and let them know that, you know, they have to stay in the median, they can't go into the traffic, you know, and those type of things to try to, you know, sort of tighten the reins a little bit on that. But as far as going and telling them right now, there's no, there's nothing, there's no law on the books that would afford us the opportunity to go and say, okay, you can't be in this median begging or panhandling or asking for money, regardless whether it's for your own personal consumption or for, you know, a benefit nonprofit for recovery. Regardless, there's nothing that affords us the authority to do that currently. So again, we could look at some sort of ordinance that would, you know, put some restraints around it, above and beyond what the, you know, what the law provides us currently, which again, if they're out in traffic and impeding traffic, you know, there is, there are steps we can take to address that. But the fact of the matter is, you're talking about, if you're talking about this one specific intersection, which again, is something I think we could regulate time and place, because if you're talking about what formerly was an individual who would sit on the corner of Walmart and, Walmart entrance and panhandle, as opposed to now that same individual moves down into the median at Myrick Street and Down East Highway, which is a busy intersection, four lanes going in, actually five lanes going one direction, two lanes going the other direction, turning traffic in each direction, confusion by all that drive that road as to where they're supposed to be, you know, so I think maybe under the guise of public safety, we can address individual, perhaps individual intersections that are more dangerous than others without an outright ban on the activity of panhandling, so.
Does anybody have any comments on this? Please, just step, someone want to comment?
You're right, sir, about Portland, the audience sent a class. Actually, apparently doesn't bother me. In Portland, you have drug deals and prostitution at the same time, going on in Forest Chapel, The Oaks, and Park Avenue. Those are things that really bother me.
Hi, everyone, Tracy Hare. I'm not actually a resident of Ellsworth, but I oversee a shelter here in Ellsworth, and I love where you're going, outright banning people asking for help but for safety. And I've seen other, I was, I read about Portland, and what's interesting, you can put guardrails in place for public intoxication and jumping in front of traffic, but time and place is successful because essentially, if you move, if you ask somebody who's asking for help on a median, they're still going to be poor when they go around the corner to the next store and to the next traffic situation. So I think that's a really good use of, or a way to ensure safety without violating somebody's freedom of speech, because you're also talking political signs, campaigning, lots of different things that freedom of speech in the median, I would encourage you to look at that. I'm happy to be on call for you guys if you want to talk about or any input from homeless service provider. I've worked in the homeless services for 19 years. I get the safety challenge, and happy to work on a way that we can keep drivers safe, the people asking for help safe. And also there's public education, you know, don't stop in traffic when there's a green light, things like that. But I'm happy to be of service if you need any input or would like any conversation about it. I think it's a good way to go to keep people safe.
Thank you.
Joan Linehan, 157 Joe Road, Ellsworth. I don't think you need an ordinance for this. I hope that the local police can just take care of it from the safety, there must be rules or regulations already in effect that we just need to enforce so that doesn't happen. I don't know what the law is, but it doesn't seem to me like anybody should be standing on that median in the middle of all those lanes of traffic you just decided. There must be some type of laws already in effect that we could already, you guys could enforce that would make it safe for them. Can anybody just step out in front of traffic and stop traffic?
No, that's right, I said, there is a law in place for impeding traffic, but there's no law preventing someone from standing in the median, which is what?
Isn't that impeding traffic?
Not if you're standing in the median, they're out, they're out of the flow of traffic, they're not in the travel lane.
That might be open to interpretation. I know I drive through there too, nobody's ever stood in front of me, but I'm always afraid of hitting somebody there because they're leaning out in there right there, so. I'm not about the panhandling or the asking, there's a place for it, but safety-wise, it seems like we already have enough existing laws that we should be able to keep people out of those places. At least I'd encourage you to take a look at it anyway.
I have, and I can tell you that there's nothing that prohibits from someone from standing in the median as long as they're not impeding traffic.
Well, but I'm saying, I think it impedes traffic, just standing on that median impedes traffic to me. I think it's definition more than anything else. I think your law can be defined to impede traffic, I consider impeding traffic. I don't, I'm not worried about the panhandling, if they want to go to Walmart, that's fine, or wherever. Just my thought, I think it's a matter of definition where you should be covered already.
Basically, the median's public right, is that right? So my question would be, oh, Gordon Workman, I live in Ellsworth, President of Ellsworth, sorry. But talking about Mr. Lyons' issue is, now, what if he said someone stopped, right? He almost hit the guy in front of him. Insurance purposes, guy stopped for a panhandler, he hits the guy in front of him, either he brain damaged the guy in his little VW, or he kills him. Who's going to be responsible for that? The panhandler?
No.
Me.
It would be the person who rear-ended the other driver.
Even though the guy stopped?
Even though he stopped short.
See, then that would tell me that there's time now where you have the right to change stuff as in public right of way.
The issue is, the issue is, you can't penalize the panhandler for the actions of that driver. So that panhandler was standing where he has a legal right to stand, doing what he has a legal right to do. And if that driver made a poor decision and decided to jack on his brakes and stop in front of an 18-wheeler, that's the fault of the driver, not the fault of the pan.
But the panhandler induced the action?
No, he didn't. He or she did not. Absolutely not.
All right, I'm just, I'm just looking at insurance-wise.
Just their mere presence in the median does not constitute the driver's poor decision.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just wondering who, someone that, basically, we should have a notice saying, do not stop for any panhandlers in Ellsworth whatsoever because you're responsible if anything happens.
You can, again, goes back to the public education component, but people do ridiculous things on the roads every single day driving, and it's unlikely that you're going to get compliance with people who feel that it's more important that they provide that resource to that individual and aren't thinking about the consequences.
Okay, no, I just didn't know if there was another way of looking at it to help his concerns.
I think the issue of the time and place and talking about that is the avenue that could be created, and I do think that the issue's bigger than just one population. I appreciate the fact in terms of talking about, you know, if somebody could be standing out there with advertising, whether they're running for a local office or selling something, we see that all the time. So that, it is, what we're talking about is a safety issue, and I think ultimately the question is, do we, do we have an issue in the city around some of those locations that we should address in a way that we can address? And the laws are the laws, and if we need to enact something to address a safety issue, then we should consider that, and I think the idea of having a workshop and talking about it, trying to figure that out is the right direction. I think Council Lyons, one, I appreciate you raising the issue, best on safety issue, and I think we've proven it would have been your fault today.
So basically, what you say is the safest place will be in the future will be at the corner of Beachland Road and outer High Street.
So is there, like, they stand out with a sign that says hungry, well, isn't there a place they could go to get money for food or something if they're really truly, without having to stand out there? I just mean, is there something in place, like, could they come to City Hall and say, look, I've got no money, can I get some money for food or something? Is there any kind of that?
I think some of these questions will be answered in the next, or addressed in the next agenda item.
I mean, I don't want to see anybody go without eating, but I don't want to see anybody get killed because of that either, so that was my whole thing.
I would just, I would just say that we do have resources, and several of those resources are here in the room, but, you know, whether the true need is food or money for other issues is, you know, remains to be seen, and that's obviously a case-by-case basis, which again is why, in order to address the issue, if you stick to the regulating time, place, and again, the safety component as opposed to the reason behind why they're there in the first place, then I think that's, that's for our lane to stay in, and then the reasons that are driving the individuals to be there are resources that we can tap into both at the city and throughout the community through nonprofits to help, help ease that burden on the reason why they're there. But ultimately, for the city, I think our first step is to identify it as a problem, as a safety concern, and then address how we can best rectify that situation, and then direct those people to the resources that are available when we need to.
So, Council Lyons, since you raised it, are you comfortable in terms of having the city staff give some thought about a workshop and pulling something like that together? A workshop doesn't have to be this elaborate thing, if it's just an open forum and put some structure to it, and maybe out of that will come some recommendations that the council will be able to?
Yeah, I mean, just make sure, you know, there's something available for them, if they really truly need food, I mean, I don't want to see anybody stop to that. If they're out there to get money for alcohol and cigarettes and drugs, well, I don't want to see them get that either, so, I mean, but.
Well, we leave it at that, we'll ask the city staff to pull that together.
Can I just ask one question? I agree exactly with what Glenn Moser just said, and I'm wondering if our city attorney has been asked that same question. It seems like he could research the legal laws and solve that problem very easily, I would think. So just if it hasn't been done, I'd encourage Glenn to do that if they have.
That could be part of the workshop question.
But if the law already covers it, then you don't need the workshop.
Well, I think, I think it's a bigger issue in terms of letting other people in the community be involved in.
I agree.
I know that in Portland, the Salvation Army will give you food, vouchers, and clothes.
Thank you. All right, item 23, Comprehensive Look at Homelessness in Ellsworth, The Current Situation and Friends Presented by Area Groups and GA Directors Sponsored by Councilor Stein.
So also thank you to Council Lyons. You brought up this issue about panhandling a few weeks back, but also framed it around a general issue of homelessness, which I think is incredibly important to look at, because I think every time we dig into a part of it, we discover that there's a larger issue, and it's only a matter of time before we start looking at specific bits of that larger context. We've seen recently main sweeps of homeless encampments, recently in the news, Portland's so-called tent cities. Bangor City Council recently discussed proposal for an 18-month plan to address homelessness as well, which councilors said sounded like a good discussion but that they needed to hear from experts before moving forward on anything concrete. And now we've seen reforms like LD 2003 aimed in part at accessible housing come through this council and the planning board. So we're now working on the comprehensive plan, which will look at how our city will grow for the next decade, and the city is growing, and issues surrounding homelessness will grow as well. So in light of all that, I invited some organizations here this evening to talk about homelessness because I had some questions, like how many people are experiencing homelessness, where are they, who are they, what are their needs, what are the barriers to care for them, what is the situation actually like, what are the trends? So what I'd like to do is allow these experts to speak on all these questions, to allow these experts to speak on all these questions, to have them act after speaking as sort of a, a panel for us. Um, I know there's a ton of information. It's been a long night, so it's, I don't want to be too curt and ask everybody to keep it very, very brief, but I instead would like to consider these experts as part of our community, resources to move, to use moving forward, um, to, you know, consult for things like what should ordinances look like to protect the safety of people if they're panhandling, um, and things like that. So I'm hoping that their, uh, their knowledge and their responses will inform some decisions that the council eventually will have to make, um, so that we can do so in a holistic way to address these issues as a whole. So, uh, here are Tracy Hare, um, Shell, uh, M.A.S. Shelter Director as well as Home Inc. Maine, um, continuing with the city's general assistance fund. Um, Shayna Frazier, Executive Director of Families First, Paige Johnston from Healthy Acadia, and Sherry Billings of, um, Hancock County Habitat for Humanity, and maybe some others. They can introduce themselves.
Yeah. And so just as, as you prepare to speak, one of the things I would ask is that if the point's been made, um, to, to not make it again, um, so that we can make this efficient. So, because I'm sure you're all gonna share very similar statements and information and, um, that way we can, uh, keep this efficient and recognize everybody's time. So whoever wants to start, please step forward.
I'm Tracy Crossman. I work with Healthy Acadia. I'm the Housing and Community Resource Navigator. I work with people that are, um, in the community, um, unhoused, incarcerated. Um, so I just tried to pull some numbers together. Um, from October of 2021 till now, I have worked with a total of roughly 315 individuals, of which 207 of those people are or did experience homelessness. Um, I currently have 36 unhoused from Hancock County, 13 unhoused that are outside of Hancock County, um, 19 that are incarcerated that were unhoused when they went, became incarcerated. I have 81 that status is unknown. That's a mix of Hancock County and not Hancock County or from. Um, and then I have 10 temporarily housed at a motel, uh, five that are in treatment or sober living, and five that, uh, are deceased. They were homeless and then passed away. Thirty, and then 30 people that, um, have been housed, which are 18 households. Um, I was gonna give just a, I know we're trying to be quick, but homelessness definition is living in a place that is not fit for human habitation, living in an emergency shelter, living in temporary housing, included but not limited to a hotel, motel, campground, unlicensed campsite, or rehabilitation facility, exiting a hospital or institution licensed under Chapter 405, or a correctional facility where the person or household resided for up to 90 days. If the person or household was in an emergency shelter or a place not fit for human habitation before entering the hospital, institution, or correctional facility. Losing the person's or household's primary nighttime residence and lacking the resources or support networks to remain in that residence, or fleeing or attempting to flee violence and has no other residence. And then Paige has something.
Hi. I'm Paige Johnston. I'm the Community Health and Sports Director at Healthy Acadia. Um, I just wanted to speak to our experience with, uh, the homeless population and the warming center that we operated last year, um, from December 23rd until April 30th. We had 91, I did send you an impact report that's, um, covers more, but I'll keep it brief. Um, we had 91 unique individuals and a total of 1,277 bed stays, cumulative bed stays. So some folks may be stayed most of that entire period and some transitioned through or were able to work with our navigation resources to find another space. As you know, we had ERA funding available last winter, and so that was putting folks up in hotels that's not available this winter. Um, I am expecting those numbers to be higher. Uh, at the city's request, we actually just did a, like a pop-up temporary emergency shelter for Hurricane Lee. Um, and we had 15 folks during that 36 hour period that we were open. Um, so, and, and all but two of those were, uh, had zip code data for Hancock County. Um, so those are just sort of some of the things we're seeing from that perspective. Uh, and while we do have resource navigation, um, Tracy's wonderful what she does. She works with Tina all the time, who's amazing. But the problem is that even if you can get your hands on a voucher or some general assistance, oftentimes, you know, even if I went up right now to go look for a rental, I might not be able to find one. And I'm housed and I have a job and I have resources. Um, folks that are currently experiencing homelessness don't have those things and it's even harder. They face many more barriers, uh, to be coming, to moving through the continuum from unhoused to housed. So this is definitely a broader discussion with many facets. It's gonna require probably a lot more time than what we have right now, but I, I'd love to see more of this conversation happening at the city level.
I can go next if you'd like.
Sure.
Yep.
Um, so, I'm Shayna. I'm the Director of Families First. Um, and like we just heard, this is definitely a multi-layer, large discussion, but, um, I'll try to break down a little bit of what we're seeing. Um, currently right now, we have a combination of people who are on our waiting list for housing and/or that we're working with via outreach, and that's 66 families that are unhoused. Um, pregnant mothers, moms with kids, um, single parents, disabled individuals, people that have, um, disabled children, people that have immediate housing needs where they're living in tents, they're living in their vehicles, um, they're getting immediately evicted, um, they don't have stable housing due to various reasons. And we see this could be financial difficulties, domestic violence situations, substance abuse. Um, additional situations include, um, individuals that are seeking outreach assistance to transaction from homelessness to public housing. Um, and then people graduating from transitional programs such as ours. We have a residential program. Um, but we find that there are no housing options for our people to go to when they graduate our program. Um, and again, a lot of things, there's just a lot of layers to it. Um, some of the issues that we see are, uh, a lot of the rents are like $1,500 or higher. Um, our population cannot afford that. Um, there are low income apartments, but that's still contributing to the homeless population because we have people that are on those lists for eight months, 12 months, trying to get into low income housing. Um, again, with the transitional housing, we can't get them into housing after they're done with transitional housing. Um, people who are chronically homeless oftentimes have criminal history, which will be a huge barrier for them getting into public housing. Um, I think that we could look at doing more reparative relationships with landlords. There are a lot of landlords that do not want to rent to low income families or Section 8 families. Um, um, 85% of our homeless people have had childhood trauma. Um, a lot of people avoid public housing at all costs and would rather be homeless than live in public housing. Um, so that's just a little bit of what we're seeing. It's just definitely a bigger conversation.
All right. So I, I won't, I'll try not to repeat any of that. I'm Tracy Hare and we run, so Hancock County, we have four homeless shelters in our county. We have 53 beds, uh, for homeless services in Hancock County. 25 of those are here in the city of Ellsworth. Um, last year, we, we counted 82 people outside. Uh, we do a count every year in the whole state and somewhere around here, we walk out into the woods behind L.L.B. and we work closely with, uh, the city as well and other organizations to count folks. And we got a number of 81 people. We have a 53 bed capacity in the county, a 25 bed capacity in the city of Ellsworth. And so what's happening, what we're seeing now, homelessness in Maine has doubled. That's just a reality that we're facing. There's no city or town in Maine that hasn't experienced that crisis. What we're also seeing is that a dramatic reduction in availability of housing for people. So we're not necessarily seeing a huge uptick in people with substance use disorder. What we're seeing is that there's, there's no place for them to go. So there, it's manifesting in the woods. It's manifesting on sidewalks and so forth. Um, we're really excited about the partnership that we've had with the city. We met with CHCS path workers and myself and others met, I think it was about a year ago, I'm losing track of time. Um, and we tried to come up with a real plan to take this on. It's gonna take a community effort. We can't, homeless shelters can't solve it. Cities can't solve it alone. We all have to do it together, but it, it really starts with understanding the problem. What's happening in Maine is we have 1,300 beds in the whole state. We have 4,500 people experiencing homelessness on any given night. The math's not there. Those folks are, um, cycling through systems. So they're frequent users of hospitals, jails, homeless shelters. To do the math, you may, you may correct me on this, but it's about $900 a night to keep somebody in jail. It's a, it's thousands to keep somebody in hospital and it's about, uh, $50 a night to keep somebody in a homeless shelter. We don't charge. That's what it costs to serve. It costs about $33 a night to provide a subsidized housing voucher, uh, for the entire year. What we've got going on in Maine though is a bricks and mortar problem. We, we're about 25,000 units, bricks and mortar units shy of housing in Maine. We can put about a thousand units online a year with a good funding package and how, uh, this 131st legislature has put more funding into housing that, um, that they've ever done before. You'll see some of that probably in Hancock County. I'm not sure what your planning board's looking at now. I know I've got some, a project happening in Orland and others. So you're gonna see more housing come online, but as rents continue to rise, mortgages continue to rise, and our property valuations go with those higher, higher, um, home values, we're gonna see this problem. Maine's really at the precipice of unsheltered homelessness becoming normal. It's a solvable problem. I think Ellsworth's off to a really good start. My, our relationship with the city and with Tina, Healthy Acadia, we've got a wonderful, uh, uh, collaboration. Uh, we've got a, I'm not, I'm not sugarcoating this. We've got a lot of work to do. Um, in January of 2020, I went behind L.L.B. into the woods and I found three tents, eight people. Last year, 25 tents. Uh, so that's, that's what's triple the number of people experiencing homelessness and the shelter system can't absorb that. What's happening here and, um, I'm gonna call you Chief Mosher, but City Manager Mosher, and I talked about this. The shelter we have here in Ellsworth, we opened that in, I think it was 1979, early 80s. And it's not a low barrier shelter. So what that serves is, um, individuals and families who present homeless with children. And what we're seeing is, um, families with children who are homeless make up about 45% of the population. But we're also seeing on the other end of that, uh, people who have, um, chronic mental illness, who are chronically homeless, also needing homeless shelters. And so as our organization, we have to decide what, what population can we serve the best because we can't serve children in the same shelter as we're serving low barrier. So as an organization, we've had to make some really tough choices. Um, so EMAIS homeless shelter serves the city well, but it's not serving our needs anymore in Ellsworth. We have a problem with folks who are unsheltered due to severe and persistent mental illness or chronic substance use disorder. Um, on top of that, shelters in Maine are running with massive deficits. The low barrier shelter in Bangor is running at an $800,000 deficit. We've got five shelters in the state, big shelters that are at risk of closing. Um, to run a low barrier shelter in the city, and maybe that's something the city is interested in, but it would require a nonprofit to pay very high wages and it would require, um, a, a different skill set than, than my traditional, the traditional shelters we're running now. I've had to teach my staff Narcan overdose reversal. There's, you have to have bathrooms that go both ways. So if somebody's overdosing in the bathroom, you can get in safely. Uh, there's lots of things that go with that. If we made a conscious decision at the EMAIS homeless shelter to only serve people with, uh, who are chronically homeless as a low barrier shelter, the vicarious trauma to the kids we're serving would be big. So we chose not to do that in Ellsworth because frankly, most of my staff are in Orland. So I lowered the barrier at the shelters we have in Orland, but we're still not as low barrier as, uh, Healthy Acadia's warming center was. Maine has four low barrier shelters. Um, Portland, Aristoc County just opened, uh, just changed theirs last year. Hope House in Bangor and Mid-Maine homeless shelter in Waterville has just gone low barrier. Um, that serves folks who are actively using, who are, who, um, are not program compliant. Most of our shelters, including the ones, the four that Home has, including EMAIS, require some form of program compliance, meaning you have to work on your housing goals with us. And I know I've talked a lot, this is probably a much bigger conversation, but I just wanted, if anything, the city of Ellsworth to understand this is not an Ellsworth only problem. This isn't caused by anything anyone has done. We are in a crisis that, I've been at this for 19 years. I've never seen people, so many people in the woods. And, uh, Chief Mosher, if you, if you've seen that before, but this is a first in my career. Um, I've, I've found people on, uh, the stoop at the library in Bucksport. So that's where I live and I'm actually running there for town council. Um, but, um, it's an epidemic and, um, we can only do it together. I'm not asking for money. I'm just, I'm thrilled to be in this conversation with Ellsworth. Happy to help. Um, and I'm just thrilled that we've got all the right people at the table. So thanks. Yeah. And happy to answer any questions.
Good job.
I think we have one more person who's presenting though, right?
Yeah, she's just got one more person.
Jesse.
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 Hi. Um, I am actually just here in support of Shayna. I think everything has been said. There's certainly more that can be said, but I think, you know, everything has been covered to the best of the ability that the time has. So, thank you.
What I'll do now is just have a, if there are public comments, I'll get public comments and then we can have a discussion about it. So if anybody would like to speak on this, feel free.
I'd like to reference a psychologist, might as well. He makes a statement that said, well, no shelter in Florida, you don't provide those first. You have nothing. Now wouldn't Portland, the soup kitchen's gone, all the tree shelters gone. The right of resource, uh, has turned into a homeless shelter. It's not, it's 300, that's it. And your tent over a pole is still down the ocean.
Did you want to say something? Just briefly. Mr. Stein. I'm sorry. Katina Banadstein. I do the general assistance for the city of Ellsworth. I actually, you had, um, asked about resources. So I have drawn up a list and I wanted to give it to you all so you can look at what's available in Hancock County and in Ellsworth. Everybody, I mean, wanna first say, I think, I wanna appreciate all your help and assisting with, um, the unhoused and you guys have pretty much touched base on anything I would say. However, I did wanna just briefly state, um, we also have a small issue with our elderly. Currently, um, they may not be unhoused, but they are certainly running into some troubles financially, um, trying to decide whether they want their medicine or their food or what is most important to them. Due to such huge rise in food and housing and it's causing them to reach out to me. I am seeing a lot more of our elderly looking for assistance because what they're receiving in social security, um, does not cover their expenses. So I, besides our unhoused, that is a concern of mine that's kind of pretty actually. Almost sounds Christmasy.
Please.
Sorry. Yeah. So I mean, that is another concern of mine. Currently I am seeing a rise in the elderly asking for assistance due to not having the income to support themselves. So, but if you guys, any of you have any questions over the resources list or please, if anybody has anything to add to it or please contact. if anybody has anything to add to it or please contact me, you can call me, email me, or if anybody has any questions, I'm always available. Whoops, that was not mine.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's a great list, I'm bringing this list to work.
Would the, are you still taking questions?
Yeah, I think, is there anybody else?
Would the council be interested in, in light of time, but also continuing this conversation, a workshop? And would some of you or all of you be available to said workshop sometime where we have real time to dig into it?
And I can't remember, is this item one of the subcommittee items on the comprehensive plan and if not, we should bring it to them. Is, oh, Matt's here. Matt is here.
Still here.
He's still here.
Housing is a specific chapter in the con plan, so I mean, as we, housing will address homelessness in some capacity, our unhoused population in some capacity, which at the steering committee meeting next week, you'll get an update on where we're at in that, the next stages of the plan, so more to come, really.
Now, will that, will that be put out to the public though, so we'll have this kind of a discussion? My, my thought is, I mean, I'm listening to everyone and I, and I've been, you know, you read Portland, Portland's trying to do something, Bangor's trying to do something in Ellsworth, but there's never a comprehensive, like, is the county trying to do something? So, because I know that everyone that's homeless in Ellsworth isn't necessarily from Ellsworth. So, I mean, this is Lemoine's problem, this is, I mean, because I'm sure they have homeless, but it seems like everyone's trying to do it independently rather than can we get leaders from the entire county and the county government and, and look at it that way to, instead of trying to put it on one, each municipality trying to come up with their own thing to do, because it is, and I, Tammy and I live in Bangor and it's a, it's a heck of a problem in there.
You work in Bangor?
I mean, we work in Bangor.
We work in very, yes.
No, 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 we live in Bangor.
Somebody needs to look into that.
Work in Bangor, no, I drive a one every day.
It just feels like you live there.
Well, that's true.
It does feel like I live there. And it's a, it's a, it's a horrible problem there and they're trying to solve it themselves. It's just like.
Is it possible?
Well, I, I just wanted to echo that. I, I think, I think a workshop is, is important because this is an extremely complex issue that requires discussion and not, what happens is that, just by human nature, is that we tend to go to a portion of it that we see, that we think we know, and we define that as the problem, and then we're trying to come up with a solution for something that is just a small piece of it, it's the wrong problem to solve. And so, for example, talk to developers. Talk to developers to find out why they can't develop affordable housing to increase housing stock. It's not just about funding and grants for those developers, it's also about restrictions that are placed on those developments. We need to have honest discussions about that. What, what prevents us in this state, in this country, from developing new resources? And when we have those kind of open conversations and we bring everybody to the table and we understand it from all those different points, we can come up with better solutions, we can come up with, with ways to address the entirety of the situation and not just go to that one place that we might see as a member of the community. And, and so that, that, it really does, I appreciate you bringing this to the table. I think it, it warrants that kind of conversation beyond just a comprehensive plan because it is complex, it's dynamic and it, and it deserves the attention because it is something that is becoming worse. Tina, I appreciate the fact that you, that you talk about the, a larger segment of the, of the community, because again, there's, it tends to be a perception of what homelessness is and who experiences homelessness. Reality is, is that it is becoming a growing issue and it's not going to get solved one community at a time. It's not even going to get solved one county at a time. There's some big issues that we need to address, but we can start the discussion and we can lead that and, and bring others along as, as we go.
Yeah, I agree, and just buying everybody or building everybody a tiny house is not going to take care of homelessness because there are reasons that they're homeless and the reasons are what's not being taken care of and it's, it's a sad thing to watch, you know, because you hear people say, well, I don't understand why they don't just get a job. You know, just some people can't. And so then, you know, what happens? And some people can't live by themselves in an apartment and some people can't, you know, take care of themselves well. And so those are issues that have to be taken care of. It's not just being unhoused, it's having, it's the reason that they're unhoused and that's, it, it is complex. And I, and I sit here thinking, how, how in the devil would the city of Ellsworth solve this issue? How would we even make a dent in that type of an issue by ourselves? And that's, it just seems like it needs to be, it needs to be a bigger discussion with a lot more people and, I mean, and money isn't even going to solve the whole thing. So anyways, I would love to have a conversation, I would love to be part of something like that, but I just, it's a never-ending.
Someone's got to take the initiative to actually help each individual with their problem, so.
Because as I'm sure you guys see, there's no two people that are alike for the reason that they're unhoused.
So before we get into that.
Before we turn this into a workshop?
Before, exactly. Counsel Helen.
If I may, the gentleman in the back, you have told people here that you're homeless, correct?
Yes.
Could we just get you to come up and state your name and tell us just a quick story about how you become homeless?
Sure.
It looks like we have some education right here.
Yeah, I don't know, two colleges, two universities, but yeah. I was living in Mildred.
What is your name, sir?
Donald Edward Hallen.
Thank you.
I'm from Portland. What happened, I was, well, let's call it conspiracy theory, okay? Way back from my five hundred dollar, thousand dollar house in Yarmouth, first I called Togas, they said they have complex PTSD. Secondly, when I was nineteen years old, I was on the Kennedy compound, okay? Almost killed Ted Kennedy, the CIA driver. At that same time, I wrote a letter to our senator, Angus King. Three days later, in Yarmouth came white SUVs, female, black SUVs, male FBI, they had androids and drones then, in nineteen ninety-nine. Androids and drones then. Anyway, since that time, I've been shipped everywhere. First benefit, hospitals too, Saco, Mildred, all over. Now, the last one, Mildred, right, they tried to nail me, didn't work. I went to court and beat them. All right, since that time, I've been homeless, I was homeless in Matthias. And now, one night with a big storm, this prices were, took me over to the recovery center. Okay? Now, if I go back to Portland, I'm safe here, you know why? Because I did CIT training with the Portland police and the Southpaws and I have connected Kim, the behavioral specialist there, puts me into a spurring delivery room, which I worked for too. I worked thirty-four years in a home. So when I leave here tomorrow at nine oh five, I mean, twelve thirty, catch the bus, I'm going to Bangor and straight to Portland, right to spurring delivery and all my stuff is going to come right there. And pretty soon, I'm going to be looking into Westfront, the lottery built. So I, but I won't be homeless in Portland. I never am going to go to Portland. I just stay right there, can't be able to fetch Portland police, I go right there, go in my home show. But yeah, I went to USM to read a psychology, UMA, mental health and human services, two certifications, MHTC, neurotician, and substance abuse, South of Miami, Florida, and I went on Stevens Avenue, what's it called, nursing. So can I talk now about medical marijuana or do you want to wait or?
Yeah, we're getting to that item, we're not there yet.
Okay.
It's a long meeting.
Is there anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Oh, this one, one more thing, in Portland, they build high riser, there is a giant A&amp;P warehouse, vacant peers. In Augusta, where I used to work, AMI, you didn't bake it peers. They should renovate those places for homelessness of people transitioning from review, they don't so.
Thank you. So workshop?
We'll send some emails around, workshop dates.
So would we consider the other hand handling as part of that conversation or is it going to be separate?
It's a little bit different, but I don't know, maybe the city staff can think about it in terms of weighing in that, making a recommendation and I certainly would be.
I think it's two different things.
There's certainly some safety, safety issues and ordinance issues involved with where people are in those conversations, but.
Figure that out. And Tina, that's what happens when you call up Tracy for her phone.
Sorry.
Unless there's any further questions on this one from the council? Thank you so much, it was a late meeting, thanks for sticking it out. Thank you all so much.
You can shut that off, we don't have to stare at ourselves.
Thank you, please.
Item twenty-four, discussion and vote to submit the following proposition to be voted upon at the next municipal election. Do you favor Ellsworth opting into cannabis permitting, including adult-use medical cultivation and/or testing facilities pursuant to chapter, pursuant to charter section two point oh eight, submission of propositions for popular vote sponsored by Councilor Stein? And if you don't mind, gentleman's been waiting to talk about this issue, can I have him come up, have his say and then we'll, we'll go for that? Now?
I'll combine to make it short, marijuana, I think we do a tirade about human brain of monthly, five lower rank, throw most important, cognition, everything comes rear, nothing else matters, just this most of all. Why imagine that you have your brain that protects the brain, all of you have fatty tissue all around it. Now, if you smoke grass, number one, a lot, it builds up in the fatty tissue of brain and you never straight, number one. Number two, grass is a central nervous, is depressing. You smoke enough and you get really, really depressed, real depressed. They did a study with California kids, at least fifty percent of kids in high school smoke grass. Slows your senses down, timy your ability to think, cause you just can't do it. No more marijuana, arsenic in it, baby powder, mixture of cocaine and heroin in there too, aside the arsenic. There's no regulations on marijuana, it just comes. So I'm saying, whatever you can do, you got to stop and destroy it. Or it's going to destroy your kids, it'll destroy your, the hell would the money make off the grass? It wasn't worth it to touch your people, not at all. So my advice is get rid of it, destroy your kid. Or your kid's going to get really sick from it, someone will die. All we've got to say, is that enough?
Thank you.
Yeah, it's a hard act to follow. So I'm not going to be making, making a motion this evening. I spoke at length with our city planner, Matt, who's put a ton of work into this question, so thank you. What it seems like is that there is not appropriate time between now and the election to, for people to get the information, talk about the issues before the item will be put on a referendum for this November, nor is there enough time to really compile the ordinance. So, you know, how it's written here is not how we need to look in the final ordinance, so there's just not enough time. So instead, I'd like to just have a brief conversation here of some of the work that Matt's been doing about what the actual process would look like. So moving this discussion away from should we, shouldn't we, should this go to a referendum to briefly, what would this look like? What would the mechanisms be to push this forward? And if anybody has thoughts on that, otherwise, I would table the discussion to move forward this, this ordinance to sometime in the coming year.
Yeah, I think he sums up pretty well. I mean, Glenn, Tony, Janon and myself have had a number of discussions and seeing the agenda item about how it needs to be set up. And so we've got neighbors like Surrey who've gone through this before and maybe didn't do it properly, so like the adult use, medical use needs to be split up. You'd educate people on what the four categories for adult use are, like cultivating, manufacturing, retail, the other one. And then medical marijuana is a little bit different because Ellsworth already kind of addressed that. But, you know, the referendum could have served a purpose in terms of fact finding, you know, back in twenty sixteen when Ellsworth, or state voted to legalize marijuana, Ellsworth was a fifty, like two, forty-eight, something like that split, pretty close, but ultimately voted no. Maybe getting a temperature of what the voting base is like now, referendum could be useful for that. But then, once you opt in, you kind of opted in, so you have to have time to prepare those ordinances and regulations and find out exactly what the community actually wants to opt in for. It's hard to write ordinances if you don't know that piece too, so just having maybe a conversation separately about what that should look like if the council's interested in having staff spend time on it.
Any, any proposition that the council puts out for vote, whatever the results are, whatever the wording is in the results, the council has to then implement. That, that is an absolute. So if the wording isn't, if people aren't clear on it, then they can run into problems in terms of knowing what they're voting on and, and the time to, to do that. So I think, you know, having more time is, is appropriate, it gives more time to discuss it. And the, the other reality is, is the only proponents in terms of pushing this issue, since I've been on the council, are businesses looking to sell. I haven't had much in the way of the community pushing one way or the other, so I think having the community have the chance to learn more and then having that process, that makes sense.
Also reaching out to anybody who's watching this later or anybody in the audience, send us your thoughts, your thoughts to the city. It's always helpful to hear what people, what people think about these issues.
In, in part of our conversations, one of our thought processes was we have a presidential election coming up and to have this type of referendum, referendum item on a presidential election where we're anticipating somewhere in the ninetieth percentile of all the registered voters participating in that as opposed to a forty-ish in a regular election. So if there is desire from the council to move forward with preparing what we need to do in order to see this on the referendum for next November, I think that would be the target date because that's going to get you your most, you know, information from the community because you're going to get your highest participation in, in voting.
Yeah, I'm definitely in favor of that.
Quickly.
Yes, one joint, the dissonance in one joint are put to a whole pack of cigarettes. You think you smoke four joints a day, there's four packs of cigarettes. Think of the number one killer, cancer, cancer, and how much money it's lost, cancer. Think of that.
I just wanted to throw out that whether it's this subject or another subject, I really liked the idea of putting it to Mr. and Mrs. Ellsworth for their input.
Not to mention, you know, we don't want the city staff to do a ton more work without knowing that that's actually what the people want as well.
Yeah.
You've already done a ton of work, but.
Not that one.
Okay. That's a good point.
Item twenty-five, discussion of possible election.
I think Gordon had something.
I was waiting for you to say public comment. I thought we were doing it.
Resident, Gordon worked in resident of Ellsworth. Now, there's already an ordinance in effect, correct? Ordinance sixty-one?
Medicinal.
This, this is what Matt's talking about, is that there's a difference in the state law, there's medical marijuana regulations.
Right, medical, yeah.
And then there's recreational.
Right.
Two very separate, very separate.
Right.
Ordinance sixty-one is recreational, right?
No.
It isn't?
No, it's medicinal.
Oh, okay, I thought it was, it got to do with any sales.
Recreation, you have to opt in.
Okay, because we had a vote back in two thousand sixteen, the city did already, right? About this whole deal, for recreational.
The state to legalize adult use, but the state then put it on the individual municipalities, whether you want to opt in. The city of Ellsworth has never opted in.
Okay, all right, that, that's.
For recreational use.
All right. I think he said it well, I don't have to say anything. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Item 25, discussion of possible action about the preservation of Ellsworth's water resources, including recommendations for city actions relating to its great ponds, the Union River watershed, and drinking water, with presentation data by area conservation groups sponsored by Councilor Stein.
So this is more or less piggybacking off of last month's agenda. Ordinance passing aimed at limiting overnight access to the great ponds. Property owners brought up great points about limiting pollution, protecting watersheds. I reached out to a number of conservation organizations, some of whom are here tonight. Resoundingly, they were, they were concerned about the issue, but they were more concerned about pollution and watershed issues that come from the roads, the driveways, and the properties themselves surrounding the lakes. So I thought it would be worth taking another look at what some of the key issues are and how we might address them, keep in mind that some of these will eventually have to become staff work, some of these would go through the comprehensive plan. So this is sort of a broad overview of the most important issues. We have Mary Blackstone of Green Ellsworth, Ellsworth Green Plan, and various other organizations.
Thank you, Mary Blackstone. I'm an Ellsworth resident, and I'm here with three other folks that are connected with Green Ellsworth. Mark Whiting, who is the president of the Hancock County Soil and Water Conservation District, and also waterfront property owner in Ellsworth. George Linebaugh, and Duane Shaw. Duane Shaw is the executive director of the Downey Salmon Federation, and George is involved in Green Ellsworth as a volunteer and on their board. So, thank you very much, John, for, for acting so swiftly to pick up on a discussion that was really very interesting for me to hear at the previous council meeting. The, as I recall, the, the discussion called for, first of all, some sort of comprehensive ordinance that would address water resources generally in Ellsworth. And Councilor Beal specifically mentioned that what we do in our ordinance relating to our public water supply should perhaps be extended to other, other lakes. So this, this sounded to me like somebody who was definitely on the Green Ellsworth wavelength. It's, this is a discussion that we've had extensively as we were working up to the Ellsworth Green Plan, and particularly the water chapter. It's, it's certainly a timely discussion because our, we've moved from creating a plan to actually implementation. And so what I, what I did in the handout that, that you each, I think everybody has a copy of the handout that, that I provided, I wanted to provide these specific recommendations that are in the Green Plan that relate to our water resources and are essentially focused on conserving water resources from a number of perspectives. The, the first thing I want to mention, though, is that an ordinance is one of several tools that a city can have in its pack to address water protection. And so I think it's important to think of actions as opposed to specifically to think about an ordinance exclusively. So what, what I tried to do at the beginning of this handout is to focus on the scope. And I, I will say, when Councilor O'Halloran mentioned the idea of having a comprehensive ordinance that addressed water, I had some concerns about such a large-reaching, a wide-reaching ordinance. But as I thought about it more, I, I sort of began to think that this may not be a bad thing, given the fact that we have a unified development ordinance that addresses land use regulations. Water, just because it's fluid, is actually something that is perhaps well addressed in a comprehensive ordinance as opposed to little bits and pieces, because it's all connected. And that, in the first handout, item on the handout, the scope of the resources is important to think about in the sense that the groundwater, which wasn't mentioned in the previous meeting, is all part of the package, and the groundwater feeds our lakes and ponds. And it's obviously part of our private water supply, which is, of course, the water supply that the majority of Ellsworth residents actually depend upon, as opposed to the public water supply. So obviously, the watershed is fed by that water that ultimately goes through the lakes into our, into our river. And what goes into that river flows right, straight through the city of Ellsworth as a primary feature of our, of our downtown. So all of these elements of the water resources that we're talking about are profoundly connected. So the idea of starting perhaps with a focus on aquifers and groundwater, as it feeds the lakes and ponds and whatever, is, is perhaps a good place to start. And so the, the idea of a unified approach or comprehensive review of how we deal with conserving water resources is, is a good idea. And that includes a number of actions, which, which I've listed as, in addition to regulations, leading by example, public education, incentives and support, and then backing up the regulations with implementation and enforcement, and partnerships and volunteers. And I think it's important to think about it as a package, as opposed to simply ordinances and, and looking at the regulations. And what's at stake, I think last time, councilors were very clear that they understood what's at stake. Obviously, our drinking water, which is both private drinking water from groundwater and our public water supply. But in the last, prior to the most recent assessment, over a third of our property taxes came from waterfront property. You take that away, you have a major crisis with respect to our water resources, and this city is in big trouble. Additionally, we need to think about our water resources as being one of Ellsworth's major assets. It is, it, a lot of towns and cities would be blessed with one, maybe two, maybe three lakes. We have seven, and that doesn't count two impoundments, which we think of as lakes. We also have a river, a historic salmon river, and whitewater, wonderful whitewater rapids on those rivers, on that river. We have wetlands, which are accessible from right downtown Ellsworth as the connect, through the connector, which takes people to the Sunrise Trail. And the wildlife in that, in those wetlands are really extraordinary. We also have tidal shore, shorefrontage. So all in all, the water package, we need to think of that as Ellsworth's major attraction. It's not just some, something where people pass through and casually notice. It's a major attraction for visitors and for residents. It's a major attraction even further if the city of Ellsworth, in contrast with other communities in, say, the state of Maine immediately around us, if we enact significant protection measures, if we take actions to really preserve those water resources, then property, shorefront property that's already highly valuable will become even more attractive and even more valuable, because this city has made a stand with respect to protecting it, as opposed to potentially other places where people could buy. So that's approaching some of the, some of the reasons, some of what's at stake here. So what can the city do? Leading by example is one thing that's, that's mentioned in the handout, and there are a number of ways that the city can, can lead there. I will, I should mention that most of these are actually already on staff's tables, they're already on the radar screen, some of the things have been mentioned by council or your committees. And so these are not distant things that, that you're unaware of, that, that's very clear. But these are things that are not priorities at the moment. They've been set aside. Leading by example is making them the top priorities, so that they're dealt with immediately, or as soon as they can be, given the fact that some of these are broad scope. And some of these things really need to be dealt with before the city starts enacting further regulations. So we have snow dumps that are regularly used along the Union River. They're in contravention of both EPA and DEP regulations. When we dump snow in a place on the river where it drains immediately into the river, that's in contravention. And I actually was with our code enforcement officer when a DEP person was pointing out to him that those, that the complaints about that had not been addressed. The city cannot put in place regulations that bring others to account if it's in violation of some regulations itself. So those are things that the city, that are varying levels of seriousness that the city can do to lead by example. We're going to certainly help Green Ellsworth with, with respect to the public education approach, but the city has the best, is in the best position to help with public education because it has, it does regular mailings to taxpayers. So it's in a position to send out flyers, for instance, that educate people as to how they behave around the waterfront, how they treat their waterfront property, to maximize the quality of, of the wa, of the water. And city could put up a webpage to guide people on what they can specifically do. They could help with workshops or presentations that could address the way in which people who are property owners or users of the water could improve the, the way they treat the water. Incentives and supports, certainly as far as incentives are concerned, encouraging people to do the right thing on their property is probably a better approach than punishing them if they do something that, that we don't want them to do. So the Lake Smart certification process is actually a good way to get property owners educated as to what they can do when they own property on the water. And Lake Smart rewards people by giving them a certification. The city could also reward them, and some communities do, by giving them a little bonus as far as tax relief is concerned on a one-time basis. That's just a little carrot to help people, encourage people to do something like Lake Smart certification. The city already does, helps to support, applies for grants for courtesy boat inspections. It can extend that to other lakes by putting in a, a group application for a number of lakes and working to help train people who are perhaps volunteers, who might have a little financial bonus for doing the courtesy boat inspections. Another carrot, another approach to incentives, could be looking at impervious surfaces. With Card Brook, we have an urban impaired stream, which is certainly a serious problem and an ongoing problem for the city of Ellsworth. We have a problem in part because we have 96% impervious surface around Card Brook. What can the city do to change that situation? Well, providing some sort of incentive for, for commercial property owners to remove some of that impervious surface and to actually increase green space around Card Brook would be one way to do that. So I'm just running through this as fairly quickly, but I want to hand over here to Mark Whiting, who's going to talk a bit about what the regulations might look like. I'll come back and talk about implementation.
I'm Mark Whiting. I'm a resident of Ellsworth, and I'm also chair of the board for the Hancock County Soil and Water Conservation District. And I've been asked to talk a little bit about ordinances that would cover water quality for the city. I think a water quality ordinance should include all of our water bodies. I think the, the city council kind of brought this up in the first place, and we were thinking about lakes. But also, we have a number of other high-quality water resources in our city as well. We should be looking at lakes, streams, rivers, tidal waters, wetlands, and groundwater. All of those are important. We often say that water is life and that, and that we need to protect these resources for Ellsworth's future. I agree with Mary when she says that education is the primary way of getting people to take care of their environment and take care of our homes. But ordinances are probably necessary too, because there are some people who don't know or don't care. And so you need a carrot and a stick. I think the, the goals of an ordinance would be to provide for monitoring and assessment work. It should provide for environmental protection and protect water for Ellsworth's future. Monitoring, just monitoring alone is a really big job. It's more than the city can do. But Murray mentioned that there's a, that are, that there are many programs and partners that we can work with, and a lot of this work can be done by volunteers. So for instance, some of the partners that we could be working with are lake associations. Lake associations are already doing monitoring on these lakes. Not all of them have monitoring programs currently, but many do. The Conservation District is, water quality monitoring is one of our specialties. Lake Stewards of Maine is another one, and Maine DEP, who do volunteer training work. DEP is also the database for the lakes of Maine. So anyone who does monitoring work, all of your findings, all of your data can go on this website that's managed by the state. Data is important because data is what you need to manage a resource. I mean, basically, you just can't manage a resource that you don't understand or don't know. And then, what might be in an ordinance? Well, that's why we need a committee and a group to discuss this. But some things that we thought of were borrow pits. So the state regulates borrow pits, but only those over five acres in size. And DEP is pretty good at this, but they also have staff shortages, and they can be very slow to respond. So having our own ordinance allows us to act more quickly if we need to. And also, there's the question of the gravel pits, the borrow pits that are smaller and under the state radar. A very small gravel pit can make a very big mess, and so we may need to intervene in something like that. Another thing, we noticed that float planes are allowed on Branch Lake. This is our water source for the city of Ellsworth. Float planes, trucks are allowed on winter ice during ice fishing. So two of the major ways that you can get fuel into a lake is when a truck goes through the ice. An entire tank of diesel or gasoline can go right into the lake. Float planes can hit at an obstruction and flip over. I think there was a recent accident in Maine where someone was killed just that way. So this happens, it's a real thing. I'm not saying that we should regulate, keep float planes out of Branch Lake, but it's something that, that an ordinance would allow us to consider. Water extraction rules have been an issue in other parts of Maine, where large companies have moved in, started to bottle water and sell it. You know, this is our water, we may not want somebody to come in and do that. The state has shoreline zoning, and it provides for buffers on most wetland and water resources. But small streams don't get that protection. And again, where streams go right into the lake or right, right into our water supply, maybe we would want an ordinance... we would want an ordinance that would provide buffers for those smaller streams. So, anyway, those are some examples. And as I say, the actual decisions are going to be made by others. But, so, there's some ideas. So, thank you for your time.
I just wanted, as Councilor Stein, in terms of just from my understanding, where, what do you envision for this, because part of this is feeling like a workshop?
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering what you're looking for us tonight, so that as I'm listening to it, I have a better understanding. Because if you're heading towards a workshop, then I think this might be better suited there, but I don't know what you envision.
Sure. Similarly, to a couple agenda items ago, addressing homelessness, I mean, there's so much to unpack here that it should, the vast majority should go to workshop. I'd love to see that happen. So, but so far, what we've heard, these examples, started to talk about it. We saw that it took several years of hard work for the Branch Lake ordinances to come through, and so, these are also going to take a long time. So, having this conversation started tonight so that we are aware of the most pressing issues, I just learned a dozen things that are important that I had no idea were happening as well. So, I think, yeah, I think this is, we can sort of wrap it up and agree to, if the council so wishes, to talk about dates at a later time for a workshop to more deeply address this.
That sounds like a great idea to us, certainly if you want to do a workshop. I think it would be, given the length of time that it took to get the other ordinance, which was really very small and focused. This is potentially something large, either revising a whole bunch of ordinances and adding new ones, or making something the equivalent of the UDO for water. So, I just, I think it would be really helpful to start it now seriously, and so, it runs parallel with the comprehensive planning process. So, some of the practical questions that come up when you actually try to do an ordinance will actually feed into the comprehensive planning process and into this. So, maybe the first thing that you could do or enact after passing the comprehensive plan is to follow up with this ordinance. That might be the right timing, I think. So, yeah. I think Dwayne just wanted to say one thing about Branch Lake.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Mary.
Excuse me. I just wanted to reinforce the fact that, my name's, well, Dwayne Shaw, Downey Salmon Federation, as I said earlier. But water is the home for fish, obviously. So, it's more than our drinking water, and it's more than a place that water runs downhill and ends up, but the fish move through the water. Branch Lake is a popular fishing spot, and of course, the river is as well. And there's some important things that are on your plate now, and that is where these two things come together, and that is Branch Lake Dam, for instance, that you own. As a city, it's the drinking water supply. That dam is, needs repair, seriously, and there is money now available. So, our organization works closely with communities from Medibemps to Castine. We're really across the region, working with towns that have dams and culverts and so on. So, in the case of Branch Lake Dam itself, recently, I attended a meeting here with your planning staff and the city manager, in which the contractors, the engineering team that's looking at that, were exploring, patching it, rebuilding it, and assessing overall the needs there. And one element of that could be fish passage. So, thinking in terms of revenue, the town, city currently receives revenue in the form of alewife harvests. And the river currently produces about a million alewives a year that come back to the river. They, of course, have to go up and over and around with the trap and truck situation. That's going to change in the years ahead, but at Branch Lake itself, now would be the time to put fish passage in. And the only way which you would get perhaps the seven million alewives annually would be to provide fish passage in other places up and around the watershed. So, our organization can assist the city with applications and the technical aspects of that, such that you might qualify for additional grants, for instance, that would help pay for a portion of the dam to be rebuilt. That would include the fish way, and that would relieve some costs that the city might otherwise not have access to. So, that's just one example. And I guess just the second thing that is, won't wait for a comprehensive plan, is the relicensing of the Brookfield dams. And I think you're all somewhat familiar with the situation. The dam, those types of dams, federally, Federal Energy Regulatory Commission licensed dam gets a license for forty years, sometimes more. Now is the time. This process has been going on for over eight years. It's now in court because the Brookfield has appealed up through DEP Board of Environmental Protection and has gone into the courts, and the AG's office is now reinforcing what DEP and BEP had said. No, you've got to modernize these dams. You've got to maintain water levels at a more natural state, and that will improve fisheries and real estate values and recreation, many other things. So, the city can participate, I think, more aggressively in those, in that particular conversation. And again, it won't wait for the comprehensive plan. So, thank you, and we're more than happy to participate in workshops and so on around this and to support the city.
I am twenty-six. Councilor comments. I am twenty-seven. Adjournment.
I will adjourn. Second.
All those in favor? For adjournment.